All right, very good. Good morning, everybody. This the Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021. A regular session of the NAGS Headboard of Commissioners is hereby called to order. And if you will, please join me in a few moments of silence. And now, if you will, please, as you are, whether you have a flag or not, join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States, and to the republic for which it stands,
One nation.
undergone indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item on our agenda would be the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
Mayor, make a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. Madam Clerk, if you will, please poll the board. You're muted, Carolyn.
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote, please.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor pro Tim Sears?
Aye.
Mayor Cahoon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is recognitions, but before we go to that, as we're introducing this meeting, I do want to note that in the past week, as we move into recognizing our long-serving employees, we have an employee who's not been with us a very long time, and that's Shannon Krisonowski, who works at the front desk, and she was recognized during the last week for providing exemplary service to one of our citizens and received a comment through our online comment portal. And we just don't want to let that pass. That's the kind of makes us on the board look good is when our employees provide that kind of service. And that's what it's all about. So now we'll proceed to our recognitions, and first, that will be recognition of Ed Hawley, and I'll call him Terry. Terry?
Good morning, Mayor.
Morning.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be able to do this once again. I've only been here a short while, and it seems like I've been here every month, recognizing some of the employees in Public Works. And I've been told I need to be a little bit more verbose and talk a little bit more about the employees. So Eddie's been very gracious and given me kind of some background here to work off of today.
Very good.
Eddie Hawley is the facilities maintenance supervisor for the Town in Agshead, and Eddie was originally from Alexandria, Virginia, but he's been on the Outer Banks for 38 years. He currently lives on the Albemarle Sound in Kurutuck County and has been there for the past 27 years. For about 10 years, he owned a remodeling company. Before he bought a restaurant, he owned and operated with his family, which he had sold after 12 years of operation. Eddie has served on the planning board of Kurutuck County for six years, and he's also officiated county school sports in the likes of football, basketball, softball, and volleyball. So you can see he's very much a sports-minded person. He enjoys boating, fishing, and golfing with his family and friends, so he definitely likes to be outdoors. He has one daughter, Rachel, and a son-in-law, Tyler, but as of this date, no grandkids. Rachel is following in Eddie's footsteps here in serving the citizens of local government as she is the deputy city manager for the city of Burlington. And Eddie is very proud of his daughter, Rachel. Eddie's most favorite thing to do is having drinks on the deck with his family and friends while watching the sunset on the Albemarle Sound. And here in the very near future, Eddie hopes to be doing a whole lot more of that. With that, I talked to Eddie just a little bit this morning about what was going on in his area, and he's got his crews scattered out throughout the entire town. He's trying to get the elevator fixed at the town hall. They're doing work on the beach access points. They're doing some cutting of brush down on the south side of town. And also, they're installing a new heater in the town park. So he's got a lot going on in his world right now. So with that, I'd like to introduce Eddie Hawley. Hello.
Good morning.
Anything you'd like to say?
Well, as you all know, that it never stops here at the Town in Agshead. So there's always something to do, something to repair or prepare for, and we're preparing for another season coming up. It'll be here soon.
All right. Very good. We, and I'll let the board members weigh in who may know you better, but we appreciate your service, your background. Some of that background I didn't know, and certainly appreciate all of your life experience that you bring to this job. That's great. And whenever I've encountered you, not only do you know what you're doing, but you bring a great attitude to your job, and we appreciate that. And I'll ask the board if anyone has anything to offer.
Ed, this is Kevin Brinkley. I just want to tell you, congratulations. I worked with you for a number of years and know just how dedicated of an employee you are. And the others, you mentioned that you play golf, but you didn't tell them just how good of a golfer you really were. And remember, I played in a tournament, not alongside you, but at the same tournament, and you're a really good golfer. So congratulations on your years of service, and thank you for everything you do for us.
Thank you, Kevin.
Excellent. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Ed. Y'all got a lot to do, so have a good day.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's recognition for five years of service of Amy Miller, and I'll call on Andy. Morning, Andy.
Hey, good morning, Mayor Commissioners. Today, we'd like to recognize Amy Miller for five years of excellent work with the town. Obviously, Amy started with the town in January of 2016. I believe the 25th of January was her five-year anniversary. Amy came to the town in 2016 with a wealth of knowledge of North Carolina local government finance. She worked for over 20 years with Dare County and the town of Kill Double Hills. She's a dedicated professional, certainly dedicated to her profession and to the town. When Amy started here, she immediately began working towards a high standard in the town's financial reporting. In May of 2017, a little over one year after Amy started with the town, the town was awarded its first certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. And this is for the town's comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFRA. You've heard that term a lot. The GFOA established the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting in 1945 to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements, preparing comprehensive reports that demonstrate a spirit of transparency in accounting and financial reporting. Certainly, that's been a goal of the town, and Amy's helped us achieve that. The following year, under Amy's direction, we also started preparing a popular annual financial report, which is sort of a scaled-down version of the CAFRA. It puts the information in a much more publicly accessible format, provides a nice overview of the year's activities and accomplishments. And we've sort of been using the CAFRA as our annual report since we started doing it. The GFOA has also recognized the town for our CAFRA with an award of excellence every year since we started doing that. So we've been doing the CAFRA for four years now, and the CAFRA for three years. Amy has certainly transformed a lot of our administrative processes since she's been here. She's gone through an extensive project to migrate our accounting software to Munis. While this has been long and challenging, and in some cases painful, it has expanded the town's capabilities to provide online services to our constituents. It has also streamlined many of our workflows throughout the town and increased our capacity as an organization. Amy's always working hard to be responsive. She's very good at working through problems. She's a solutions-oriented person. She serves as the town's finance officer. However, she's also the departmental director for administrative services. She's certainly caring for her coworkers, especially those in her department. This is always demonstrated whenever you see Amy present something or recognize an individual in her department. Her words are certainly well-prepared, and she's certainly appreciative and sincere when she does this. And I think that speaks to Amy's character as a person, as a leader, and as a town employee, and we're thankful for that. So I'd just like to thank Amy for her five years of service to the town and all the accomplishments she's achieved. We look forward to many more years of Amy serving the town, and we just want to thank her for her service. So, thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Amy, anything you'd like to say this morning?
Morning, Andy. Thank you so much. That was so humbling and gracious. I'm very thankful for this job. I'm very thankful for my staff because I couldn't do my job without the staff that I have. I'm thankful for management and the support of the board. And I always try my best and give 100%. And again, I'm very thankful for this job. Andy, I appreciate those kind words that you said, and I look forward to being here for hopefully many more years. Thank you very much.
We sure hope so, too, Amy. Thank you. Board members, anything to say?
Congratulations, Amy. Thank you for the job you do for us.
Thank you.
Amy, it's Renee. Thank you so much. You do a great job and make all the information very understandable for all those of us that don't delve into all the financial statements. So we appreciate all the hard work and dedication.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Amy, for all your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Andy and Amy. The next item on our agenda is a presentation, which is the Annual Jeanette's Pier Report. And for that, we will turn to Mike Remidge and George Bonner. Mike, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be with you again. I'm gonna take a moment and try to share my screen with you to pull up a short presentation. All right. Can everybody see that?
We can, I believe. Thank you.
Okay, great. All right. So obviously, 2020 has been an impactful year. It's been an interesting year, and it's been a turbulent one. But we've made great strides at Jeanette's Pier, and I'd like to share some of that with you. I'll touch on some of the subjects you see in front of you right now. First and foremost, the elephant in the room, right? COVID. The pandemic has been upending all of our lives. It's upended a lot of businesses. It's changed a lot of what we do. The most noticeable impact at Jeanette's Pier was a significant decline in visitation last year, of course. Overall, there was a 37% decline in visitation as compared to 2019. Of course, that had a lot to do with the fact that we were closed for almost three months. When we did reopen, the summer months were down about 30% on average. So even though there were a lot of people in town, people were, I think, being very cautious and very careful about what they did. And we also had to operate under some visitation guidelines here at the pier. So we had to restrict the number of people coming into the pier house, not necessarily going out on the pier, but coming into the facility. Although we did bounce back greatly in the fall, our shoulder season was fantastic. September was the best visitation we've had since 2017. In October, we saw the best visitation we've had since 2014. So that was really nice to see. I think the fall fishing season really helped us. There were some significant operational impacts this year. Of course, I just mentioned we were closed for three months. All four aquarium facilities were forced to close on March 17th. The pier was fortunate to reopen on June 8th. That's mainly because we could operate outdoors. The other three aquarium facilities unfortunately missed the entire peak season of the summer. They did not reopen until September 14th. We were all forced to cancel almost all of our onsite education programming. All of our rental events were either canceled or rescheduled till this year. And we did go through a significant hiring freeze, and a lot of our temporary staff were furloughed, unfortunately. We were able to bring many of them back once we reopened, but not all of them. The Aquarium Society, our nonprofit support organization, decided to close all the gift shops. Now, our gift shop at the pier was open for the summer months, but was forced to close on September 24th. And the gift shops are not reopening until March of this year. Fortunately, they will be reopening, but the financial implications of the pandemic were just too much to bear for the Aquarium Society. They did take a positive step and open an online store, selling some of the items to try to keep moving some inventory that they had on hand. And they were fortunate as well, the Aquarium Society, in that they received funds from the CARES Act in the form of the Paycheck Protection Program, as well as some money that was sent to the state. So they did receive some COVID relief funds from the state. Unfortunately, this did not offset the significant losses that they suffered during the year. That being said, the Aquarium Society did have an outstanding year in development. Their biggest year for development in many years, they brought in about $1.5 million in development funds. One positive note, the CARES Act also supplied funds to install free AT&amp;T Wi-Fi networks in the parking lots of all four facilities as part of the NC Student Connect program that is up and running at Jeanette's Pier and at the Rhode Island Aquarium right now. If you know any families that need access to high-speed Wi-Fi so that they can do their schoolwork, please have them come to our parking lot. They can log in and get that access right now. One thing that the pandemic did allow us to do was focus on some recovery. We are still recovering from Hurricane Dorian, unfortunately. It took us about nine months to settle the insurance claim, but once we did, we were able to jump into a lot of R&amp;R projects. We just finished a complete roof replacement of all six structures on the east side of the beach road at Jeanette's Pier. The roof, the water infiltration from the roof damage we suffered led to almost all of the other problems we had. So we had to repair the ceilings in Ocean View Hall. We had to replace 30 light fixtures in Ocean View Hall that were damaged from the water infiltration. We had to replace all the attic ductwork insulation. We also replaced a couple of exhaust fans on our bathhouse, and we are expecting the delivery of our brand-new wind turbines at the end of this month. So these are a brand-new model of wind turbine from the company. They have one less moving part, and they are much more sustainable than the original wind turbines. So we're looking forward to that. We are hoping for installation sometime this spring. We're also able to focus on some other R&amp;R projects. We were leveraging funds from other sources. Obviously, revenues were down for us, so we tried to leverage those funds from other sources to do the things we needed to do, including some R&amp;R funds we received from the state of North Carolina. It's fantastic. It's the first time Jeanette's Pier has ever received R&amp;R funds from the state. Most of those R&amp;R funds are going towards maintenance projects at our wastewater treatment facility behind San Onomos. We were also able to leverage some funds from the Coastal Studies Institute to do some repairs at the end of the pier as well. We never stop thinking about new exhibits. We're always trying to freshen up what we have for our visitors and our guests. We were able to install two new whale skeletons on a permanent basis. This is a mother and calf pygmy sperm whales, which you see in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. Unfortunately, these two perished on the beach just north of Outer Banks Pier several years ago. But the skeletons were re-articulated by the Maritime Museum staff in Beaufort, and we, like I said, have them on permanent display now in the pier house. We also partnered with our friends at Sea Grant to install a new interactive exhibit. And a local woman donated a little free library to the pier in memory of her mother. So that's a new opportunity we have for people to share books on our entrance ramp. Although most events were canceled, working with the event organizers and your staff at the Town in Agshead, we were able to host two surf events in the fall. The ESA Championships, which have been coming to Jeanette's Pier for many years now, and for the first time ever on the east coast of the US, the National Scholastic Surfing Association National Championships. And what the picture you see in front of you is the Outer Banks owner, Will Dean, who won his first national championship this year at the NSSA Championships. So those events went very well, and we are very thankful to the organizers and the town for working very closely with us and pulling those off under extremely trying circumstances. So as I mentioned earlier, almost all of our educational programs were canceled for the year. Our field trips were canceled. The summer camps that we normally hold were canceled. And our education staff had to pretty much change tactics on the fly and come up with new opportunities, working with their partners at the other three aquarium facilities. We were able to invent some virtual summer camps and also create some online learning modules that we're distributing around the state. And what you see in that map, that heat map there, is the number of online learning modules that are being shared with schools around the state. So we're taking the opportunity to try to expand our educational footprint using the virtual method. We are hoping that we can get back to normal, a little more normal this summer, once the vaccine gets out there and the pandemic starts to wane. But we've created tons of new opportunities for education. Jeanette's Pier staff continue to participate in the Marine Mammal Stranding Network. We had a busy year last year. We cover the area from Duck through South Agshead, and we received more than 80 calls, responded to nearly two dozen of those, and provided more than 80 hours of service to the network. We also moved ahead with some sustainability grant funds to increase our sustainability footprint here at the pier. One of those grants allowed us to establish a recycle more center at the pier. So in addition to the normal recyclables, we now offer guests the chance to recycle solo cups, plastic bags and plastic film, and mixed-variety product wrappers, which we ship to TerraCycle for processing. The second sustainability grant allowed us to replace the solar panels on the pier, which control some of our lighting out on the pier. Unfortunately, they were struck by lightning a year or two ago and were damaged. So this grant allowed us to completely replace those and revitalize their use. With the added stress of the pandemic placed on all of our staff, we felt it was critical to recognize their good work and remind staff that we truly appreciate them. So the awards that you see here and the staff that you see here in front of you, these are peer-nominated awards and peer-voted on. These are not decided by management. All staff has an opportunity to nominate their fellow coworkers for these awards, and Meredith Fish, Rhodes Lee, and Janie Shanks were the recipients this year. So if you stop by the pier and you see any one of these folks, please congratulate them for us. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize the retirement of a long servant to the North Carolina Aquariums. Some of you may know Mark Joyner. He's a bit of a larger-than-life personality, but he was with the aquariums for 42 years, and 34 of those years were with the North Carolina Aquarium Society. He was integral in actually creating the Aquarium Society in the mid-'80s. So we just like to recognize him because we did not get to celebrate him like we normally would, being that it's been such a strange year. I'd also like to mention the fact that we have filled the position of our rental coordinator, which was vacated by Michelle Bunts last year. Jenny Ash, which many of you may know from Outer Banks Sporting Events, is taking over the role at the end of February, and we are very thankful to have her. So if you happen to bump into Jenny, please congratulate her as well. All right. So now for the area. I'm about to bring George Bonner in to help me, but this is the area in which I get most excited and where I feel Jeanette's Pier, along with its partner, the Coastal Studies Institute, has made some of the greatest strides over the past year. We continue to partner with the Coastal Studies Institute and other state entities on numerous research and observing projects, including recent deployments of buoys north and south of the pier. But as with all work in the ocean, things don't always go to plan. The so-far spotter buoy, which you see in the upper-left corner of the image, took on water, but not before it collected several months of wave and water temperature information. And we learned quite a bit about mooring in the shallow-water environment near Jeanette's. The biofouling buoy, which you see in the right-hand side of the photo, was, came free from its mooring and floated ashore around Christmas time. So we're reevaluating the base of that buoy for the biofouling project and may modify it slightly to be used for future experiments. So last year, you'll remember, I shared with you that we were intensely lobbying the Department of Energy. Coastal Studies Institute and Jeanette's Pier were intensely lobbying the Department of Energy regarding the Waves to Water Prize competition. And I'd like to announce, and you all may have heard, that we were successful. In June of last year, they announced that the Coastal Studies Institute and Jeanette's Pier would host the final drink stage of the Waves to Water Prize competition in the spring of 2022. And at this time, I'd like to invite George Bonner, who's the director of the North Carolina Renewable Ocean Energy Program based at the Coastal Studies Institute, to share some more details about what the town will see, what we will be doing for the next 16 months or so in relation to this prize. So George, are you there?
Yep, I'm here. Thanks, Mike. And I really appreciate the opportunity to share just a little bit on our role supporting this Department of Energy Waves to Water event. In 2019, I was fortunate to come back to Dare County back home, following 34 years as an engineer in the Coast Guard. And I spent a lot of my time in the Coast Guard, dealing with resiliency and sustainability to support our missions and dealing with a lot of those devastating forces of the ocean, trying to protect our mariner and support the missions of the Coast Guard. So I'm excited in my new role that I started a couple of years ago to try to harness that same energy to produce productive power to support our coastal communities. And this Waves to Water event is a good example of how we can do that, taking wave energy to produce potable water, drinking water. This event is geared towards technologies that could be deployed in a contingency where you didn't have safe drinking water, and you could use the ocean energy to provide that energy. And a good example I think of is when my time in the Coast Guard after the major earthquake a couple of years ago in Haiti, you know, drinking water was a problem, and a technology like this could be a great way to support the community after those kind of events. So our team is focused on a couple of things to make sure this event goes well. Number one, it's safety. We want to make sure that we're doing it in a way to protect the public, protect all the folks involved, all the folks that are going to be on and around the pier, and also that we're doing it in a responsible way to protect our environmental resources. So we're working on that hard. We're working on a safe working permit with the Department of Energy, and we're going to work with the town to make sure that we've, you know, checked everything, and we're doing everything that we can do it in a safe way. And we're updating our permits for testing at the pier, and we're working with the Department of Energy on the NEPA, the National Environmental Protection Act, since this is a federally funded event, to make sure that, like I said, we're protecting our environmental resources. And so to prepare for this final phase, the drink phase, which will be in the spring of '22, we're going to do a couple of things. This spring, we're planning to deploy one test article, so it'll be a buoy similar to what we'll be testing a year later. We're going to deploy one, go through the steps and all that to prepare. Then we're going to do that again in the December of '21. And then the final competition, the drink phase, will be in the spring, most likely in the April timeframe of '22. So we'll bring in five to eight of these leading innovator teams that have developed these technologies, and they're building those as part of the create phase. And they'll be at Jeanette's Pier, as well as the Department of Energy team and the teams from National Renewable Energy Lab that we've been working with. And they'll test those devices in the water for five days. So they'll be around Jeanette's Pier, and they'll actually pump the water up on the pier, and we'll collect the water, and the winners will be chosen on the quality of the water that they produce, how much water they're producing, how their device performs in the ocean environment. So like I said, we're excited about hosting this, and I think it's a great opportunity for Dare County, the Town in Agshead, Jeanette's Pier. And a big part of it is we want to inspire that next generation of innovators. And so we're going to have a lot of K through 12 outreach opportunities to produce that next generation of engineers and STEM leaders. And we're going to work with local businesses for sponsorship opportunities to help support that STEM outreach activity. So I just appreciate the partnership with Jeanette's Pier and the town to be able to continue to test and support events like this. So thank you.
Thank you, George. And I'd like to point out that George and I have been staying in contact with Andy Garman regarding this prize competition for quite a while now. And we'll continue to speak with Andy and hopefully have an opportunity to speak with anyone else who's interested in learning a little more. But George, stay with us for just a second, because I'd also like, George, to detail some even more exciting news that we received just before the new year. Basically, the Department of Energy has provided funding to create an Atlantic Marine Energy Center. And I'd like, George, to describe to you all what that is exactly, what that means for our area.
Yeah, so there's three other national marine renewable energy centers. There's one out in Oregon on the west coast. There's one out in Hawaii, and then one down in Florida Atlantic in Florida, where they get federal funding to support advancing marine energy solutions. And so there hasn't been one on the east coast other than Florida, and they haven't been reluctant in Florida. So we put a proposal together with a consortium of universities, including the University of New Hampshire, Stony Brook, and Lehigh, and we were successful in getting that. And there was a lot of competition, but we're really excited. So it'll bring additional federal funding to advance our testing. Uh, but we're really excited, so it'll bring additional federal funding to advance our testing capabilities and um and including at Jeanette's Pier and at at CSI. So I think it's a great opportunity. Um, and um, we're looking forward. Um, we're going through the award process now. It's going to probably take a couple of months and then there'll be a actual press release um once we complete the award with the Department of Energy.
Thank you, George. And um Mayor Commissioners, thank you all. That's uh, that's what I'd like to share with you today. And if y'all have any questions for George or I, we'd be happy to answer them at this time.
All right, uh, thanks uh Mike and George, and I'll I'll open this to the board in just a minute. Um, I do have uh three questions, and if I missed it, uh George, when is the uh drink phase of the competition scheduled?
In April of twenty-two.
Okay, great. Thank you.
It was originally going to be April of twenty-one, but because of COVID and not, you know, it got bumped out a year, which has actually been a really good thing of providing more time to prepare. So I mean, then a lot of the 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 competitors that are building their devices, they had supply chain issues and folks haven't been able to get in the lab. So that was another reason why it was moved out a year.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Um, and for you, uh Mike, is the is the new Wi-Fi in the parking lot a permanent feature?
I I've been told yes. I believe it is a permanent feature. Um, the CARES Act funds were allocated. Uh, it's been installed and um I I have not heard that there's an end date, so I hope so. I will update you if I learn more on that.
Okay, that's a, that's a great asset for families who need that. Um, my last question about the new new turbines is, do you, do you have any idea, are they quieter than the last set of turbines that were installed?
So yeah, they should be. Um, so there's one less moving part. And that one less moving part is the fact that um, if you remember from our original wind turbines, when the wind got really, really strong, the tail would bend at a ninety-degree angle. That's what created most of the noise is when it was uh furling to protect itself. The new wind turbines do not furl. They have a completely different protection mechanism. What they do is, when the wind gets really strong, they tilt upwards and the blade just slows down. So we should not get any of that noise from furling because there's no longer any furling.
All right, great. Um, board members, does anyone else have questions?
No, thank you for quieter turbines.
Absolutely.
Uh, Mayor, this is Webb. I'd I'd like to say one thing. Um, you know, it it was a few years ago that this pier was a dream. Um, and I, you know, we just have to thank uh the late Senator Bassnight, the Town of Naggshead and Dare County for making this whole thing a reality. And and Mike, uh, I think we all had visions about what we expected at the pier. And I certainly appreciate you and everything you've done to not only take those visions and dreams and make them realities, but probably have gone way before, way farther than what we could even have possibly envisioned back then. And Naggshead's fortunate to have this pier because it didn't happen anywhere else. So thank you.
Thank you, Webb. And I have to say, every time I make a decision, I make a decision based on the fact that uh whether or not Mark Bassnight would be proud of that decision.
That's, that's cool. You know, it's um Dare County is uh uh for a county with a relatively small population, um, and that's a resort center, to have the Coastal Studies Institute and the pier who can work together on things like the Advanced Energy Center. Um, there are very few communities in the world who can bring that kind of thing together. It's it's pretty cool.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate your report. Look forward to seeing you next year and to following your your activities. Thank you. Uh, the next item on our agenda is a public comment. And before I go to John, I'll ask um Carolyn if, other than the Porter Graham uh email we received this morning, do we have any other public comment?
No, sir, we don't. Uh, we also have a presentation from um the iFlood app.
Excuse me. I apologize. So I'm back. I'm sorry. It's right here. Um, so before we uh go to the the public comment, uh at least I'm informed about that when I get there. Um, the next uh presentation is on findings from the iFlood app. And uh Rachel Hausko, are you with us?
Yep, I'm here. Hi, good morning.
Good morning, Rachel. Sorry for skipping over you.
Okay, no worries. Um, let's see if I can get my uh. Are those slides coming through okay for you guys?
Uh, uh, it is. Thank you very much.
Great. Uh, good morning. Thank you guys so much for having me join you all. Um, so I'm a PhD candidate in the MIT Hui Joint Program um in Oceanography. And I've been working with uh some of the folks at the Town of Naggshead, as well as some people at the Town of Duck to do a project called iFlood, um where we're trying to understand how groundwater contributes to flooding across uh barrier islands. Um, and so there are kind of two key components to how groundwater contributes to flooding. Uh, the first process is rainfall. And the second uh contribution is ocean waves and storm surge. So in a coastal aquifer, the increase in the water table owing to contributions from rain can be up to five times larger than the amount of rainfall received across the island. And that's because as the water infiltrates into the aquifer, it can only kind of fill space that's not already taken up by sand. So if we are looking here at a schematic of the outer banks, uh the, so you have the land surface here. Um, ocean and the dash line sort of shows you the profile of the water table. And so when you have rain, that water infiltrates into the aquifer across and elevates the water table all the way across the island. Um, and then you get flooding owing to this increase in groundwater anytime the water table kind of pops up above the land surface. Um, in addition to these big rain events, um we see flooding associated with big changes in the shoreline water level. And those are driven by wind waves and low pressure, and they increase the water in the ocean. And the groundwater table right at the shoreline is going to increase in response to that change in forcing. And over time, the dune kind of acts as a big sponge and it sucks up all of this water from the ocean and it begins to transmit it inland. So over time, you're going to see the water table sort of start to come up. And then after the storm receives, the wa- water table is going to remain elevated and this high groundwater can continue to propagate inland as uh it also discharges back out to the ocean. And similar to uh the rainfall stuff, we also see flooding when the water table exceeds the land surface owing to these sort of surge-driven processes. And um if the water table has been already elevated owing to a prior storm, or you can also see extended durations of flooding owing to surface plodding. So the goal of this product, project has been to be able to predict those responses to the change in the coastal water table um driven by both these surge processes and rainfall. And then identify regions across the outer banks with recurrent flooding issues. Um, so there's sort of been a three-stage approach to how we've done this. Um, the first was to develop a analytical flooding model that'll predict how the water table changes in response to those rain and surge forcings. And then the second part of this project was to develop a citizen science flooding app that would enable us to evaluate the model performance and expand awareness of groundwater flooding across the outer banks. And then the last step was to simulate areas where we think we're going to see flooding owing to groundwater. So starting kind of from this first step here, um, we are using observations that are connected, collected at the U.S. Army Corps of Engineer Field Research Facility um up in Duck, which I'm sure some of you are familiar with. Um, so they have a long-term measurements of uh wave and tide, both in the sound and the ocean, and a weather station that collects precipitation data. And then in September of twenty fourteen, we installed a transect of groundwater wells that extend all the way across the island. So everywhere you see a colored circle in this aerial image here, we have a groundwater well that you can see a photo of in the top, right? And the wells, they measure conductivity, temperature and pressure at ten-minute intervals. So this enables us to connect the changes that we see in the groundwater levels to the conditions that are happening in the ocean. So if we zoom in and look at what this actually looks like as a time series, we're looking um here in this top panel, we're looking at the wave height measured offshore. And in the bottom panel, we're looking at groundwater head, which is the level of the water underneath the ground. And the colors of the curves correspond to the locations in the inlet map. So the blue is our furthest inland sensor and our black sensor is closest to the ocean. And what you can, should kind of be able to pick out here is anytime that you have the wave height increase offshore, we see a corresponding increase in the groundwater head um under the ground. And if we zoom in on some of these bigger events, such as Hurricane Joaquin in twenty fifteen and Hurricane Matthew in twenty fifteen, uh twenty sixteen, that increase in the water table can be up to a meter and a half. So to give you a sense of scale, I'm about five foot. So before the storm, if I'd been standing where the water table was at the, after the storm, it would be up kind of about my eyes. So this is a really big change in the underground water level. And we think this is what's driving some of the flooding processes that we see along the coast. Um, and if we zoom in and look at one of these guys in more detail, you can actually see that this high groundwater level propagates inland over time. So there's actually a delay up to a couple of days at where you see, when you see the max water level come through. And so we came up with a model that we hoped would describe this proper propagation process. And um practically what this means is we think we can predict the max water level within about ten centimeters following one of these storms and also predicted the timing of when you'll see that high water level within about a day or so. And we applied this to all of the storms that we had in that long time series I just showed you. And we felt pretty confident that we're able to reproduce the behavior that we are seeing in these twenty-six storm events. So the next stage of this project was now that we have a working model, we wanted to be able to test it to see how well it can predict flooding across the outer banks. And so we worked with the town offices in Duck and Naggshead to develop a citizen science app called iFlood. And what iFlood does is it enables users in the communities to go out and send us floated photos when they see flooding in the their communities. And we get a location, a picture, um answers to some survey questions that show us kind of when we see uh floods in the, in the communities. And we've had a lot of help from the town offices advertising the app on social media when we see a storm approaching the outer banks. We also put it out on a citizen science data repository and presented the app at an Outer Banks Green Jinx Chapter Meeting. And this approach has been really successful in getting people to use the app. And between uh September twenty nineteen and February twenty twenty, we received thirty-five reports through the app, which was really great for our project. Um, and so in this map, you can actually see the locations of where we received the flood reports. So the colored circles uh correspond to flood reports that we received through the app. The color of the circle shows you um the depth of the flood reported by the user. So red is about knee-deep, green is ankle-deep, and blue, they didn't uh respond. So this uh, so we got reports uh along a seventy-kilometer stretch of the outer banks from that all the way down to Redantha. And um the highest density of reports that you can sort of see from this map comes from Naggshead. And a lot of these reports were actually received after Hurricane Dorian as well. And so what we did was we then took the model that I have that predicts where the water table is and applied it to all of these reports that we received to try and decide whether the model is accurately predicting flooding that's consistent with the reports that we're receiving through the app. And we found that for about seventy-five percent of our oceanside reports, our model's doing a really good job of predicting uh flooding that's consistent with the timing and the location of the data we're getting from the app. So that's a really encouraging sign for us that the model is working well. And then we have some predictive capabilities of when we're likely to see flooding. And so the last thing that we uh did with this was to try and apply it to say, okay, now that we have a model that predicts where the, how the groundwater is going to respond, what happens? Uh, where are we likely to see flooding in one of these larger events? So that's what we're looking at in this map here. Um, again, we're looking at a map of the outer banks with north rotated off to the left. It's kind of standing. And the regions extends from Duck down to Naggshead. And what the color, color show you is how much rainfall uh you would need to, we predict that you need to flood a region um after the shoreline water level has increased about two-point-two-five meters, which would be consistent with a nor'easter or a larger hurricane. And so the regions in red have flooded just by the groundwater processes alone. Uh, regions shaded uh light pink, uh you'd need about ten centimeters to flood. And regions in gray and black are, we think are fairly unlikely to flood under these conditions just from the groundwater processes. Um, and then the green circles on this map are again where we received our flood reports through the app. Um, and so this has kind of highlighted two sort of higher-risk regions for flooding for us. One sort of north of Duck and one uh sort of just south in the southern section of Naggshead. Um, and then we found approximately eleven percent of the oceanside land area is about, is likely to flood under these conditions just from groundwater. Um, and so if we actually zoom in on this region here in Naggshead where we received most of our flood reports, you can see some of the uh finer patterns in where we think this flooding is going to occur. A lot of it, um, both from what we received through the app and what this uh simulation predicts for a storm shows flooding that's occurring sort of right along NC twelve, which is, I know, is a region where this community, the community has invested a lot of money in doing repairs after storms. So we think that's still uh kind of an area of vulnerability to these processes. And so uh that's uh kind of some of the data that we get uh from the simulation. And so to kind of wrap up, um, we think this uh collaboration with the town offices has been super successful. We're really fortunate to have received thirty-five flood reports from the app um and that we believe that our model is working well to reproduce the flooding that we see from groundwater and that we've had such strong engagement from the community um sending us reports from the app. Um, and then moving forward, the next thing I'm kind of hoping to do is to work with another university um in Canada who has a numerical model that predicts uh the offshore conditions and use that to be able to do some forecasting of where we might see flooding in advance of a storm. So um that's kind of what I have and I'm really happy to take any questions that you guys have about this project.
Um, I I want to really uh thank you, Rachel, for that uh really nice, clear presentation. Um, it it it's interesting, as you were presenting it, your your graphs about the elevation of the water table over over time. I was, I was sitting here thinking, well, that's a, that's a perfect portrait of South Naggshead and some other areas in town. And then you verified it when you got to the end, in fact, that 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 is what's happening there. What makes flooding in that area so devilish for us as we try to, you you know, find a way to help the folks who who live down there. Now you've applied some science to this and and a better understanding. And I would only ask uh one additional thing as you go forward into that next step. It would be nice if it is uh a predictive and is reliable if there was a, an interface that could alert town staff, let's say, or sit um through that so that we would know that there were certain measures we needed to put in place. Um, you know, to restrict traffic or whatever else we needed to do. And it sort of was a pop-up alert, uh almost like you get on your phone for weather events. And then we would, we could respond and even residents could sign up for that so that they would be when flooding might occur. Um, with that, I'll ask uh board members if they have any questions or comments or observations.
Uh, a bit, a bit, uh, this is Webb. Um, I I totally concur with what you said and Rachel, thank you a lot. Um, just one step further with the mayor's comment is my takeaway is no matter what type of drainage system we put in down there, we're still going to have the same issues. Am I correct? Isn't that the takeaway?
I, I think, yeah, I think the the takeaway is definitely that groundwater is contributing to the flooding that Naggshead is is seeing. And I think I I know David Ryan uh has been working on some, you know, pumping systems. And that's something that I think will help hopefully mitigate some of these issues. But um, yeah, my focus is mostly on understanding, you know, where there is a problem currently and I I, yeah, so that's kind of the takeaway.
Okay. Um, um, thank you. I thought, I'm totally into the, I think we need to go into a warning system similar to like other communities. Venice is the perfect example of where people are warned about flooding and there's nothing that they can do but at certain levels. Um, but it just makes sense to me, we move in that direction. But thank you for the report.
Thank you, Rachel, for your study. I think it was very informative.
Very good. Thank, thank you, Rachel. We look forward to hearing uh more about this project. Um, and uh I'll also, uh, before we let you go, I'll also express my gratitude to the town. And, uh, I'll also, uh, before we let you go, I'll also express my gratitude to the town staff who've helped and participated in this. And to any citizens who may have made those flood reports, um, you know, that's very helpful. So thank you, Rachel.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Good. Um, so now we do come to the public comment, uh, period. We, uh, John, I don't know if I need to turn this over to you because I believe we only have the one comment that's been submitted by, uh, Porter Graham. And I'll, I'll ask Karen, if she's not done that, to share that email with the entire board. But essentially Porter has written to us to, um, uh, express, uh, a question from the home builders and the Outer Banks Association of Realtors about, um, air preference for the beach nourishment projects. And his, his argument was because, um, it would, uh, seemingly, um, align with the other towns, that it would fully leverage the FEMA money and that it would avoid overlapping in financing, uh, that the board should consider, um, option one, uh, or, uh, express what our argument for option two might be. And that's the, that's just of Porter's comments, uh, that we received this morning. Um, and seeing nothing else, then I think that will, uh, that will address the public hearing, uh, portion. Uh, the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, which you have before you and a motion would be.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a, a motion from, uh, Commissioner Brinkley, a second, Commissioner Cahoon, um, uh, Madam Clerk, if you'll please poll the board.
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Aye.
Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Sears?
Aye.
Mayor Cahoon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, so the next item on our agenda is a, um, public hearing to consider a text amendment, and I will turn this over to, um, John Michael Zainer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we'll begin the public hearing to consider the proposed text amendments to the unified development ordinance that pertain to non-conforming hotels and accessory uses in association with pre-existing fishing piers. This is item F1 on the agenda. And we'll begin the hearing with the presentation of the staff's analysis presented by, uh, Michael Zener, the Director of Planning and Development for the town.
Good morning, Mayor and Board. Um, as the board knows, uh, I believe we've been discussing and considering this, uh, staff and the planning board, as well as the Board of Commissioners for a little bit over a year now. We originally presented, uh, the idea of addressing, um, at least hotels and legacy establishments uh, in January of 2020, February, uh, board meeting, I believe. And it was, uh, the result of some conversations that we were having with respect to Blue Heron Motel at the time, uh, potential renovations, um, uh, addition of, of uses and perhaps floor area enclosed spaces in that hotel or motel and, um, conclusions that because of the non-conforming use status of the property. And that was something that was, um, uh, a change that was related to the development of the UDO where hotels in the CR zoning district were, uh, removed as a permitted use, uh, whether by right or with a conditional use permit. Uh, so that initiated the discussion, uh, consideration of, of text amendments to address, uh, that potential issue, uh, being again, the, the non-conforming status of at least those hotels at the time. Uh, that led us to look at the policies in the comprehensive plan regarding legacy businesses, establishments and structures. And then, uh, with that, we had five reviews or five meetings with the planning board. And admittedly, uh, ones that were earlier in the year, February and May, uh, some of the discussions were a little shorter given, uh, in the pandemic and the newness of meeting virtually. But, and, and I would say through that entire time with the planning board, from the February meeting, uh, to their August meeting, uh, the, the way that we are addressing this and the scope of, of what we're attempting to address changed. So again, initially, uh, we were, we're very much focused on policies respect regarding legacy businesses and establishments. And by the end of it, uh, it turned into looking at, uh, non-conforming hotels and obviously existing conditions that some of the towns or two of the towns fishing piers, uh, with accessory dwelling units. What we found out again is that the non-conforming conditions or the non-conforming uses that are most affected, uh, were nine hotel properties that are in the CR zoning district. And so ultimately, we, what we came up with was something not dissimilar to how we've dealt with non-conforming cottage courts, pre-existing cottage courts, uh, that was addressed a few years back. Uh, and essentially this would allow, where you have a pre-existing, non-conforming hotel use, uh, this would allow those hotels to seek a conditional use permit, uh, to essentially alter the property in a way that would not be allowed under current non-conforming use provisions in the town code. Those are primarily under section 5.6, and I laid out in the memo, all of the certain, uh, potential changes that are precluded by that section. And I won't go through these in detail, happy to expand on those if the board would like. But essentially what we found is that alterations, uh, even moving of the hotel and are, are complicated, uh, by the non-conforming use status. They're made even more complicated if we're dealing with both a non-conforming use in the hotel and a non-conforming structure, if a structure is non-conforming because it doesn't meet dimensional requirements. So again, what we came up with here would be an option to seek a conditional use permit, which would go before both the planning board and the Board of Commissioners, uh, to review what it is someone was proposing to do to expand or alter, uh, the layout of that hotel. It's not a given that they would be increasing floor area. They may be, uh, moving certain, they may be demolishing existing floor area and reconstructing it on site. Uh, and, and I think another key piece of this, and this is also why, uh, what staff's recommendation, uh, is generally that it goes back to, that we refer this back to the planning board. Uh, we do need to have some additional discussions about, uh, the standards, the dimensional requirements that these uses would be subject to. Prior to the UDO, there were specific, uh, dimensional requirements, um, applicable to hotels that were in the CR zoning district. Those were removed because we no longer, uh, permitted hotels as an, as an allowed use. Uh, but we feel like if, if we're going to allow for these non-conforming hotels to seek a conditional use permit, they should probably be subject to those restrictions that were in place before. Uh, so the intent here would be that if a hotel is eligible to seek a conditional use permit because they're currently non-conforming, they would not be able to, um, essentially construct differently from, from what they were restricted to before, prior to the UDO. The same standards that were applicable in the former CR district or the CR district formerly. And another aspect that we're suggesting be reviewed again by the planning board is whether or not we want to come up with any standards for conditional use permits specific to non-conforming hotels. And we've come up with some, uh, specific findings for other types of conditional use permits that are additive to the standard, uh, findings for conditional use permits. And we feel as though it may be possible to do that here and, uh, suggest we explore that a little further with the planning board. Planning Board, um, originally recommended approval with a vote of six to one. Uh, we actually went back to them and revisited, uh, an aspect of the proposed ordinance where, um, there was an interest in limiting the ability to demolish, uh, the entirety of a building or the entirety of a hotel and reconstruct that. So we actually, and I can, uh, bring it up, let me screen share very quickly. So we incorporated that in the draft. I know it's, uh, maybe it's easier to see if I zoom in, but this is the draft, uh, ordinance text amendment that we provided to you. Uh, again, this would create a section 7.12.3. This is under the supplemental regulations, uh, article in the town's UDO. So this is not dissimilar to, uh, again, how cottage courts are addressed as a section or separate sections, uh, dealing with non-conforming cottage courts. So we would do the same here. And the additional item that we added, uh, for the planning board's recommendation, uh, is here. Basically, a conditional use permit may not be sought or issued under this section following the intentional demolition or to allow for the demolition of more than 75% of the gross floor area of any building wherein a non-conforming hotel use is located. Uh, we can certainly, um, discuss whether or not that percentage, uh, should be even lower. And we added the clarification at the end that this prohibition shall not apply to buildings determined to have been destroyed due to reasons outside of the control of the owner. Uh, and the other piece of this that, that we've talked about, um, it concerns fishing piers. And we, we know that there are existing dwellings, uh, on the site of it, of two of the fishing piers in town, privately owned fishing piers and those, um, those dwelling unit uses that, that residential use is not currently listed as a, as an allowed accessory use, um, for those uses. So we wanted to clarify that and not render those uses or those aspects of those uses non-conforming as well. Bear with me one second. So I think, uh, that's maybe a good summary of, of what we have done. We think that, um, the policies are supportive of this. I think we talked about in the staff report that, um, we've kind of moved away from directly addressing the legacy aspect. Early on in the discussions with the planning board, uh, we talked about certain criteria in terms of how would, um, how would we define or characterize legacy structures or legacy businesses? And we moved away from that because we really highlighted that we had these non-conforming hotels. We felt like, uh, there was some relationship between those and, you know, the policies with respect to legacy establishments. But we also, um, believe that it was related to some of the policies and discussions about pre-existing non-conforming uses that were desirable to be maintained and, um, relevant, maintained as relevant in the marketplace. And there's also discussion about, uh, the importance of retaining pre-existing hotels, uh, and allowing those to remain viable in the marketplace. And we think that this is, uh, an, an extension or implementation of those policies. So I'm happy to, uh, answer any questions that the board has.
All right. Do, uh, any members of the board have any questions for Mr. Zener?
Oh, I'll just ask if board members, if you'll just put your hand up, I'll call on you. Webb? Commissioner Fuller?
Thank you. Um, did I hear you write, Michael, and say, you're not, you're not asking us today to pass anything? You're giving us this, but you still want to take it back to the planning board? Is that right?
That's correct. Our recommendation, uh, what, what I indicated in the stat, in the memo is, um, staff recommends that further consideration should be given to establishing dimensional requirements more consistent with those formally applicable in the CR district as opposed to those applicable in the C2 district, as well as specific additional findings applicable to these types of conditional use permits. And I say that I believe that those modifications would be substantive enough to require additional review by the planning board. So the idea would be, uh, the planning board could review those additional modifications at their meeting in February. And, um, we anticipate that we could come back to the board if they continue the public hearing to the meeting in March.
Okay. Um, with that being said, um, I'm, I'm, I'm happy with that. I, I keep trying to educate myself on this and I'm having a difficult time with my own self. But one thing that may help me before we go to a next step is, can you give us a, a quick white paper on why we eliminated hotels in the CR district? To begin with, um, cause I can't remember what the rationale was is why we eliminated them as a permitted use. And it'd be helpful to have that background. That's, that's one thing. And then sort of where I am is it, I keep hearing the word and, and forgive me. I keep hearing the word legacy and then hear the word, we're not talking about legacy, but then we talk about legacy. And I'd just like to know if we're gonna use the word legacy, let's get a definition. But be that as it may, and then specific, uh, a specific I saw, we were talking about a number of hotels and one date was some date of 1980. And anything that was 1980 and before, except two of the listed hotels were built after 1980. So just some clarification on, are we talking about only before 1980? Or are we talking about things also after 1980? And then if I, and then let me just throw this out. If you have a 10,000, let me, let me make it even easier. A thousand square foot hotel under this proposal as it exists, you could tear down 700 square feet of that thousand square foot hotel and rebuild that 70% somewhere else. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe that's correct. I think it would be dependent on, on some other variables and, and regulations. But yeah, I think on its face, that, that's generally correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Can I very quickly, um, can I respond to at least a couple of points?
Um, yes, that would be appropriate before we call on the next commissioner. Thank you.
So happy to provide a, a background in terms of what the, um, the, the focus committee, uh, with respect to the UDO, what influenced the decision to remove the, the hotels as an allowed use in the CR. On legacy, I, I think we've provided as much, uh, of a definition or clarity in terms of what, how that is defined in the, in the comprehensive plan as much as I can. You know, we're not intending to define it as a regulatory term. You know, I, I think the comprehensive plan indicates that legacy, um, trying to find the, um, the quoted statement, uh, that I believe is in here, but I also think, um, was indicated in, in an email from, from Town Manager Sparks. Happy to go over that again. Oh, here it is. Contribute to the overall sense of place or tell the story of Nag's Head's past. These establishment structures or locations often remind you of the past and are nostalgic. And again, I think the, the legacy policies, um, influenced us to originally pursue this option or this path. I, and I, and I think the, the, whether or not hotels are seen as a general legacy establishment or legacy type use along the ocean front, perhaps is debatable. I think, um, I think we've heard people agree that some are, some perhaps are not. But I think what we found is that the nine properties that were focused on, um, all of them were constructed, I believe, prior to 1980, with the exception of two of them. And I think when we were, were reviewing with the planning board, there was not necessarily a compelling reason to, uh, exclude some that were non-conforming and, and, and not exclude others. I think that, that the board necessarily, the planning board didn't feel as though, um, trying to define those, those legacy characteristics or characteristics that, um, that confirmed what a legacy establishment or a legacy structure, they didn't feel like that was necessarily relevant to the solution here. The 1980 that you referenced, so in the original The 1980 that you referenced, so in the original version and when we originally presented to the planning board, the first or second meeting of the five meetings, eventually six meetings that we reviewed with the planning board, the 1980 was essentially a placeholder. If we were pursuing the the kind of the path of trying to come up with criteria in terms of what was a legacy establishment or a legacy structure, the 1980 was kind of a starting point. And we moved away from that. If the board thinks it's relevant that this should only apply because we're we want to focus on what legacy means and we feel like we can only do this if it applies to legacy properties, we can start to look at those criteria. And the date may be important. If we say, well, this should only apply to nonconforming hotels that existed prior to 1980, we could draw that line. If if we don't feel like that's relevant, if we feel like all of these hotels on the list for whatever policy support there is, because there's there's policy support, in my opinion, either way, we could narrowly define it or we could allow it to broadly apply to these nine because they're we're trying to balance relevant policies here. Then then I don't know that establishing that 1980 or whether other whatever whatever other criteria we may come up with, I don't know that it's that relevant. So hopefully that clarifies it a little bit.
Well, it it does, except for the, if you could just get me, if nobody else cares, just get me when we changed to not allow hotels in CR and what was the rationale behind that? That will help me try to get to where maybe some other people are.
Sure, happy to do that.
Okay, thanks.
All right, Commissioner Cahoon.
Thank you. Good morning, Michael.
Morning.
First of all, I'm going to start in reverse order of my comments. I don't care about a date. The goal of the town is to retain hotels and let them improve. I don't think the date of when it was built has any relevance in my mind to continue on with hotels. Second one was some years ago, the town had its land use plan as the goal of the town for nonconformities to disappear. That was taken out deliberately. And I see nonconformities referenced again as a general principle. Everybody, every building that the town pretty well values is nonconforming. So I think that is a direct conflict to planning and the town's value is, we don't care. We want, we value the buildings that we have and whether they're nonconforming or not, we wish to have them continue on. So I don't think the planning principle of nonconformities is necessarily a town value. It's a planning principle, but not us. And thirdly, I heard you reference the land use, the former land use plan about dimensional requirements. This is where I think we're getting wrapped around a little bit because we did away with the land use plan and adopted the UDO. And I don't think the UDO is as guiding a principle as perhaps a land use plan was because we keep referring back to the previous land use plan. So I'm not sure the UDO is giving us the guidance that we needed to have. That's just my opinion. As far as moving forward, I think it's great to take it back to the land, to the planning board to insert some dimensional requirements because we do need to move forward with this subject and allow hotels to do some things that they need to do to remain relevant in the marketplace. Thank you.
Thank you. Other commissioners, Commissioner Brinkley?
Muted.
You're muted, Kevin.
Sorry about that. I agree with what Commissioner Cahoon said. I'm not date specific. I can I can have that removed and the the buildings, the structures that we have listed, the nine, just because two of them were after 1980, I'm certainly okay with that. And I'm anxious to get it back to the planning board to get some information back so we can go ahead and see what we can do to to help, maybe help these structures remain a viable part of our town. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sears?
Yeah, I agree with both parties. Well, all three commissioners that have spoke so far. And I do find that this new UDO has created more nonconformities than than has worked towards relieving that. And I think that was my meeting with Greg yesterday was we need to work towards eliminating the nonconformities for whatever reason that we have because I think as a past commissioner, Suzy Walter said, that almost everything in NAGSAD, one way or another, can be nonconforming for one reason or another. And we're not benefiting by being nonconforming and extra restrictive, especially when we're trying to keep buildings and keep hotels or keep retail shops or older buildings viable moving forward.
Great, thank you. I'll ask Michael or John, is Mr. Moore present and wishing to speak this morning?
My understanding is that he has, he does wish to speak at the hearing. That's the information I've received from the clerk. And if so, it would be appropriate to allow him to present his comments to the to the board at this time.
All right, thank you. Then I will call on Mr. Moore.
Good morning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. My name is Alex Moore and I'm here representing the Surfside Hotel at 6701 South Virginia Dare. My wife and I also own a home in South NAGSAD. Excuse me, so I can attest to the flooding issue down there. But my focus today is on the hotel. My in-laws Karen and Ken Simpler built the Surfside in 1984. Today, my brother-in-law, Ken Simpler Jr., and I operate the hotel through our company, Simpler and Sons. We do business as Seaboard Hotels. We've enjoyed good success at the Surfside over the last 35 plus years. And I can attest that much of that success can be attributed to the good decisions that the Board of Commissioners over the years have made. Now, I'll add, excuse me, I'll add to Mr. Webb's earlier comments on Jeanette's Pier. You know, these types of projects can be game changers in the value add for residents and visitors, but they don't happen without thoughtful consideration from the decision makers. We have hotels in a few different resort towns. And I can tell you, balancing the two sides of a resort town with the benefits of tourism and the needs of the residential community, it's not a simple task, so I applaud you. And I also, I want to applaud the folks in the Planning Development Department. These guys have been absolutely wonderful to work with. They've been assisting me in understanding the code and how it affects our property. It's actually only been four months that I realized that the hotel was nonconforming. And ever since, the communication that they've offered has really been exceptional. So you have an awesome team there. I'm speaking today in support of, and I'm asking that you ultimately vote to approve the amendment to the code 7.12.3, pertaining to nonconforming hotels. And I'll add to, without the caveat of your bill, as the Surfside obviously was after the 1980 date. This amendment is important to properties like the Surfside and the other named hotels that, you know, you're calling legacy properties to stay relevant and viable in our town. The Surfside originally catered to folks that came down to fish the waters around and off the Outer Banks. Fishing is what originally got my father-in-law down there and he kept a ricky boat at Oregon Inlet for many years. And up until only about 10 or 12 years ago, we had to keep pieces of plywood, painted plywood underneath of the little mini refrigerators to keep the bait juice that would come out of the refrigerator so it wouldn't get on the carpet and stink up the rooms. Back then, it was room, the rooms, you know, they wanted refrigerator for bait and beer. That was the necessary amenity. You know, today, we have to have room for digital devices to plug in and recharge. That's what's important to our guests and to make these families that show up with 15 devices. You know, so things change. When we first opened, breakfast was a not-so-tasty Danish in a plastic wrapper and a cup of coffee in a styrofoam cup. And today, the way our eggs taste is more important to a lot of guests than the quality of mattress. The point is that things change over time and we have to adapt to them. Like any good business that's been operating for many years, we have to evolve and improve what we offer our customers. And as we age, to stay relevant and appealing or we start a slow decline and eventually go away. And I think that's what, you know, really we've seen with a lot of the, most of the motels in town, you know, the people just decide to to give up and they sell out because the land's worth more to put up a mega rental house. We want the Surfside. We don't want the Surfside to go away. We want the Surfside to be a part of NAGSAD, the NAGSAD community for for at least another generation in my family. And to help us make this happen, we need to have the opportunity to approve, improve and potentially expand the hotel. This amendment is important as successful hotels are vital to long-term success in NAGSAD. We're, we now compete against mega rentals that sleep 30 people plus. That would take 10 hotel rooms for an average number of guests that we have stay with us. And these these same rentals offer the latest and greatest amenities and entertainment opportunities. They also have massive kitchens that allow the renters renters to eat in as opposed to going out and to the aloks and supporting the local restaurants like our hotel guest do. We built the Surfside, as did the other legacy properties, suiting the needs of a guest from nearly 40 years ago. We're currently handcuffed through our nonconformity as we're unable to make significant improvements or expand. Our goal, my family's goal, is to make the Surfside the premier hotel in NAGSAD by continuing the excellent service that we offer our guests, but also improving the functionality of the hotel, the way the building is visually appreciated by locals and visitors alike. We want to make improvements that another coat of paint or some better landscaping alone won't attain. So I'm asking that you approve the amendment as it's written so we can recreate the Surfside into a property that is appreciated by the town, by our community as a whole and enjoyed by our future guests. So I thank you again for your time, opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Mr. Leidy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moore. Madam Clerk, are there any other members of the public who have indicated that they wish to comment on this on this next amendment?
No, sir, I have not seen any more comments.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Zener, anything further from staff at this time?
No.
Does the board wish to receive any further information? If so, raise your hand, please, and I will ask you what information you want to receive. If not, if no one raises their hand, at this time, we will conclude the public hearing and the board may consider this proposed amendment or consider actions such as tabling it as requested by staff.
Mr. Leidy, I was going to ask, would it be appropriate, would a motion be appropriate to continue this public hearing through the March 3rd board meeting?
That would be appropriate. Mr. Zener has indicated that there's a substantial change in the in the proposed text amendment from what the planning board was previously considered, and so they would need to reconsider that. I think that that would be appropriate to to continue this to a date and time certain. The, I'm assuming that this would allow ample time for the planning board to meet and consider the revised text if it was continued until the March meeting. Do you agree, Mr. Zener?
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right. And if there's no further discussion at this point then, or questions, then a motion to that effect would be appropriate.
Mayor, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing until our March 1st meeting in March in order to receive new information from the planning board and actions from them.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, will you please poll the board?
Yes, Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller? Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Airport Tim Sears?
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then the next item on our agenda would be reports. And the first of those is an update from the planning director. So, Michael, you're still on.
Thank you. So I won't go into anything in much detail unless there are questions. I don't have any, well, I have new news to report on one of the items regarding additional updates. The Decentralized Wastewater Management Plan Update Project, we have received, we've been working with, you know, staff as well as the town attorney to develop a contract that was acceptable to the town as well as to the selected consultant. And I'm happy to report that we received a signed copy, a scanned signed copy, and we're waiting on the hard copy. So hopefully by the end of the day, definitely by the end of the week, we expect to have an executed contract that was awarded to Tetra Tech. And they're actually a really strong team, we believe, that will do good work for the town and a lot of people that have previous experience on septic conditions in the town. There, on their team are individuals from ECU and the Coastal Studies Institute and also Mary Clark, who was on the team that helped develop the first decentralized wastewater management plan. And so we're really excited about working with them. And I'm happy to send out their proposal to the board so that you can review that and we'll provide you a copy of the lease, or excuse me, the the contract and the terms of that contract. But we expect that project, in the contract, we have a completion date of March of 2022. That gives us a little bit of a buffer. I believe they expect to be completed by December of this year, if not January. And we look forward to beginning to work on that project. So beyond that, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have about anything that was in the director's report or anything beyond that.
Board members, do you have any questions? I see and hear none. Michael?
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is, excuse me, is to receive a report on the outdoor lighting regulations and potential further actions. And Michael, this is you along with Planner Holly White.
Yeah, and I'll I'll turn it over to Holly, but she and I are gonna both present to you. So I'll let Holly do the introduction and we'll go from there.
Thank you. Good morning, Holly.
Oh, we can't hear you, Holly. You want to see about, yeah. So if we have a few minutes or a minute, hopefully she can get logged back in and we can hear her.
I apologize. Can you hear me now?
You can.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Board, for the opportunity to update you on the research that staff has been conducting on outdoor lighting. At the October 7th Board of Commissioners meeting, the board requested that staff review outdoor lighting regulations with a focus on our best practices. The board had expressed concern at that meeting that evolving lighting technologies, mainly LED lights, have rendered our current regulations obsolete with respect to technical anesthetic conditions associated both with outdoor lighting and the lighting of signs. Following the October 7th meeting, a staff team began to work on the research for this. This included our planning director, Michael Zener, deputy director, Kelly Wyatt, code enforcement, Ed Snyder, Margaret Kerr, our zoning administrator, and myself. Some of the research that we conducted include reaching out to the planning listserv to find out how other communities address lighting, talking with Dominion about current lighting technologies and how lights were installed in NAGSAD. Bob Parks, who is Executive Director of the International Dark Sky Association, Um, Bob Parks, uh, who is executive director of the International Dark Sky Association. We talked with representatives from Nest and the North Carolina Wildlife Resources, uh, folks. So we presented all those findings and our assessments at the planning board meeting, uh, November the seventeenth. And after some discussion, we brought back additional information to the December fifteenth planning board meeting. Um, generally, the planning board was, uh, supportive of the recommendations that were contained in the, in the memos and staff reports. Um, but specifically, they addressed, um, some of the following items. Um, the, they, the planning board supported the idea of, um, businesses turning off or dimming lights during off hours. Um, they notated that while, um, businesses would be encouraged to turn off or dim lights, that security lighting is still important. Um, they suggested that maybe we needed a clearer definition for security lighting. Um, they asked that, uh, we consider incentives for existing development to modify lighting, including lighting, uh, for street fixtures. Um, they supported the concept of light zones. Um, and lastly, they, um, asked that we gain some public input on potential, um, changes. So following that planning board meeting, staff, uh, developed and, uh, conducted a survey that ran from January the eighth through January the thirty-first. At the time that staff put together this memo, we had two hundred and seventy-four responses. Um, those survey were response, uh, responses were summarized and attached to the memo that staff provided you ahead of the meeting. Um, as of the thirty-first of January, we had a total of three hundred responses. Um, staff believes that the survey, uh, confirmed conclusions and recommendations that we've made in the memo and that the responses, um, will be utilized to further, inform our future actions and how we, uh, modify any type ordinance changes. Michael?
Thank you. So, um, one of the things we obviously looked at were our existing outdoor lighting regulations and looked at, um, how effective those were at addressing some of the issues that we've found, um, and how responsive they are to best practices, and Holly will talk about those. But generally, currently, our outdoor lighting is principally regulated in Article ten, uh, performance standards. And that's part four. Our outdoor lighting are essentially our outdoor lighting ordinance. Um, standards, and they're both, both objective and, and subjective standards. Uh, but standards generally apply, and the outdoor lighting regulations generally only apply to commercial development. Uh, they're triggered by site plan review where a lighting plan is required, although there are standards that apply to existing lighting on sites. Uh, but essentially, once a lighting plan is approved for site plan, uh, we would continue to enforce that lighting plan. If there were lighting, if there were light fixtures that were changed out, uh, we would require those to be reviewed again. Um, and so that's generally our practice here. Um, there are no standards for single-family, uh, or duplexes, and, and the lighting ordinance actually indicates that it's not intended to regulate those uses, uh, beyond nuisance conditions. And we do see from time to time, uh, enforcement calls, code enforcement calls about lighting, and, and this is one of the, uh, subjective issues where, um, we need to determine whether or not the lighting condition presents a nuisance. So that's one of the considerations I think Holly, uh, referenced is whether or not we want to have regulations or regulate single-family and/or duplex development. We have other lighting regulations kind of spread throughout the U D O. There are a number of, uh, lighting limitations specific to uses that are laid out in Article seven. Um, we also have, uh, lighting applicable to, within certain zoning districts, lighting limits. And then also lighting standards applicable in the village at Nagshead Overlay Zoning District. We have lighting standards, um, for streetlights in our subdivision regulations. And it's interesting, just important to note there, um, probably in our subdivision regulations is the only place where we specifically call out, uh, technical specs of required light fixtures for streetlights and the, the type of, of lighting source, and I'll, and I'll show some examples of that later, um, are not even, uh, able to be sourced now in terms of from Dominion. So that's something we definitely need to work on updating. There are also lighting standards that are, uh, included within our commercial design standards. And then we also talked about with the board, um, an interest in sign lighting. And so certainly there are, uh, lighting allowances and, and pro- provisions for the lighting of signage. Um, current regu- regulations include, you know, what type of lighting is prohibited? Uh, again, commercial lighting and plan requirements, what are the performance standards? Uh, must, much of our lighting regulations are geared to, uh, the measurement of the light that's coming from a light source and less on, uh, specifying the type of light fixture, although we do specify a full cutoff fixture. I'll kind of, shortly, I'll show you maybe why that is not as effective as it maybe once was. Um, regs do, the regulations do technically prohibit light pollution along the ocean and sound. There are some exemptions to that, and again, that's another area where, uh, there's a lot of subjectivity in the ordinance in terms of what, um, what those light limitations or conditions are. Um, uh, you know, enforcement of regulations is largely rela- relying on complaints. Uh, the majority of complaints in the last four years have been related to commercial lighting. Uh, however, we, we have seen, as I mentioned earlier, we have seen some increases in res- residential lighting complaints, and we generally have to, uh, inspect those and investigate those as a, as a nuisance condition. Um, as Holly indicated, we reached out to, uh, Bob Parks. He's with the Smart Outdoor Lighting Alliance, and I had, um, some experience with Bob, uh, in a previous community I worked in where, uh, Bob was actually hired by the town and town had its own municipal light plant, uh, that handled the town's electricity, owned all the streetlights, and they were looking at converting those lights over from existing high-pressure sodium or mercury vapor, um, fixtures to LED fixtures. And Bob was providing some consultation to the town on the appropriate, uh, specif- specifications for those LED lights. And, um, at that same time, we're working on the development of a, of a lighting ordinance for the town, uh, for that town, and, uh, it was a new lighting ordinance. We did not have one, uh, previously like the town in Nagshead. And, uh, Bob was able to provide some good technical guidance. So I reached out to him and he pref- performed a cursor, cursory review of our ordinance, and we've provided that to you, um, the PDF. You can see the actual comments that he offered. So I think that will be helpful as we start to look at ordinance amendments, um, that we may work on developing. And then, um, the other kind of side of the regulatory piece is, is how we interact with Dominion, uh, because Dominion is very active in the town, uh, not just on public streetlights, but also private streetlights and, and streetlights on private property. Um, and we've been speaking with their, uh, government rep, uh, in terms of their process and how they, uh, work with customers and what type of light fixtures they have specified and available to customers. And we hope, hopefully can work with them to ensure that they have product available to customers that's consistent with our expectations for lighting needs. And I can show you again a little bit later, a few examples of, of what I mean by that. But, um, now I'll turn it back to Holly. Um, she has some information about kind of the best practices.
Great. Thank you, Michael. Um, I'm going to describe a few general best practices when it comes to good outdoor, um, lighting. So generally, you think of keeping it low, keeping it shielded, and keeping it long. Um, so by that, um, I mean, keeping it low, um, the fixture low in height, but also low in wattage. Um, on the slide that you see on your screen, these is, this is an example of what that may look like in ordinance language and how we might apply that. Um, I think this is from the town of, uh, Knightdale, uh, lighting ordinance. Um, so keep it shielded. By keeping it shielded, it's just the type of fixture, um, so that the light is, is, uh, pointing downward, uh, and there, um, the luminaries are pointed downward and that, uh, we're cutting off lights when they're not in use as well. And again, here's another example of using graphics and how that might be applied in an ordinance. Um, the last, um, best, general best practice is to keep it long. And by that, we're talking about the color, um, of the lighting and trying to minimize, um, blue light emissions. And, um, blue light has been not only to be, show negative effects to, um, animals, uh, but also to humans as, as well. And, um, blue light is shown to penetrate more deeply in the water column. Um, so just in general, to try to minimize those blue light emissions. Uh, Michael's going to cover some other best management practices, um, next.
So one of the comments that you've, uh, probably seen or one of the, the, the words, acronyms that you've seen, uh, in our memo, but also in maybe Bob Parks's comments about on our ordinance, is BUG rating. And BUG stands for backlight, uplight, and glare. And it is a, uh, kind of a scoring, uh, or rating system for, uh, luminaires, for light fixtures, uh, developed by the Illuminating Engineering, uh, Society. Um, and I think it's becoming more and more relevant because LED lights have, um, the, the intensity, the brightness of them, uh, the correlated color temperature of them being different than what we've seen traditionally, whether it's incandescent or, or high-pressure sodium. And so, but they've come up with this, this BUG rating that each newer fixture is going to have. Um, and the B is backlight again, U is uplight, and G is glare. Um, even when I updated our ordinance, uh, in, in the town I was with previously, uh, Mr. Parks had suggested we incorporate a BUG rating, and that was maybe twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen. And at that time, the spec sheets we were seeing for lights didn't even specify a BUG rating. And I'm glad to see even, uh, more so that, that we're seeing lights specify a BUG rating. Uh, and we're also seeing Dominion include or specify a BUG rating. Um, just so you can kind of conceptualize this, we require that all lights be fully cut off, um, in their design and, and going back a few slides. Um, on the right-hand side here, you'll see, uh, lights where the, the lamp, the bulb is, is in a housing, uh, where it cannot cast light upward above a ninety-degree angle. So usually you would have a BUG rating of, of zero, or excuse me, an uplight rating, uh, of zero. Uh, but there are other aspects, the, the backlight and the glare, um, that, that really contribute to, um, maybe these, these aesthetic concerns that, that really led us in, into looking at this. And so we could expect that, uh, we would at least want to look at, uh, incorporating a BUG rating for fixtures in our, uh, updated ordinance, uh, or at least, um, converting that in a way that, that addressed those other issues such as backlight and glare. Um, also found, um, these examples, and, and this helps explain, I think, to me, I think one of the biggest, um, best practices, one of the biggest things associated with LED lights is the correlated color temperature. Uh, we don't currently regulate this, and a lot of communities do. And, uh, correlated color temperature is measured in Kelvin. And so, um, this is a, an example of, of what correlated color temperature is. Uh, on the far left, you have a example of a correlated color temperature of one thousand, and on the far right, a, a correlated color temperature of ten thousand. And Holly showed this earlier where, um, you progress from a warmer, uh, redder color to a cooler and bluer color. And, um, I found a couple of other slides that give you, uh, maybe a good example and a reason why people are noticing that lights seem to be brighter. So most of the existing streetlights are historical streetlights, ones that have been in place, um, you know, prior to maybe five years ago, prior to, to seeing LEDs. They were going to be, uh, that second, uh, in the color range of that second, uh, circle on the left-hand side. And that's twenty-two hundred Kelvin. That's a high-pressure sodium lamp. Um, you would also have ones meta- metal halide. If you can, if you can envision that you're looking at a streetlight and, and it appears orange or, or, uh, even pink, you're likely looking at a, a high-pressure sodium lamp. If it's whiter, it's probably has been, uh, natural white metal halide. Um, and then incandescent is around that twenty-seven hundred, three thousand Kelvin range. Um, LEDs, what we're finding is that they, the ones that are sourced in the community more, more, most often are going to be no less than three thousand Kelvin. So they're going to be whiter than most of the lights that we have seen in the past. Um, but some of them are upwards of four thousand Kelvin. If it, if you see a light in it, it's really casting, uh, what looks like natural light and, and natural light in a way that looks, um, unnatural, um, because that's not what your, what you, your eyes are used to. It's probably going to be closer to four thousand Kelvin. Um, and then this slide is another good example of that. Uh, sodium vapor, twenty-two hundred Kelvin on the right is what we probably are most commonly, uh, used to. Uh, you probably do have some metal halide, which is going to be thirty-five hundred to forty-five hundred Kelvin range. But, um, the, the, the real maybe issue for me, or the thing I see, is that your LED lights, most of them that we're seeing are not less than three thousand, and they're upwards of four thousand. So they're very much a white light. And you can kind of see, um, and this is maybe not the best photo example, but on the, on the left-hand side, um, is an example of a thir- three thousand Kelvin LED light, um, which is warmer, uh, than the one on the right-hand side, which is a four thousand Kelvin light, which is very white. And the energy output, um, of these two lights is, is comparable, is probably the same. Uh, the wider light, the four thousand Kelvin light looks more intense, uh, and you have more glare associated with that. Um, finally, we talk about signage. Uh, well, very quickly, um, some of the other resources that we provided to you, again, a model lighting ordinance from the International Dark Sky Association. And that's where the idea of lighting zones, uh, came about. And I, I'd not really, um, seen this concept before. Um, usually your lighting limits are, are, um, set, and ours currently are set based on use groups. Um, but what the model lighting ordinance from the International Dark Sky Association, um, proposes are lighting zones. So you have areas or corridors where more lighting is more acceptable, uh, and areas and zones where less lighting is, is more acceptable. And, and, um, at least I think staff believes, and I think the planning board was supportive of the idea of a lighting zone, uh, and perhaps, uh, our boundaries, um, you know, are supportive of that because we could, uh, taper the intensity of lights down in, in either direction as you're heading closer to the shores, whether it's oceanfront or, or soundfront. And so that may be something we can look at, whether or not any, uh, updates to our ordinance could include lighting zones. Uh, we provided a, what we found as a good North Carolina example, uh, that includes a lot of these, uh, newer, um, provisions that tend to address LED lights. And then, um, we also gave you a copy of, uh, the ordinance that I'd worked on previously, uh, and the town I was with previously. Um, it does not regulate residential lighting, but I think it was a good, uh, simple first, uh, pass at, at trying to, um, come up with regulations that addressed LED technologies. So, um, about sign lighting, so we talked about, uh, in our memo, a, a few different potential options. And I think we could look at lighting simply of signs. Currently, we don't, uh, really limit the lighting. We do prohibit, um, uh, essentially unexposed light sources, so unexposed neon tubes, unexposed or exposed, um, fluorescent tubes, uh, exposed LED, we, we would prohibit that. But a lot of what we see are the image on the, on the top, the John Kennedy Collision Center, where you have an internally illuminated, uh, wall sign. And I think some of the issue is depending on the number of internally illuminated wall signs, then the size of them. And we, we don't generally restrict the number or size. Um, there are limitations, but, but I, I would tell you that I think we're very generous in terms of the size that we allow for wall signs, especially lit. I think we're very generous in terms of the size that we allow for wall signs, especially lit wall signs. Some communities dictate that all wall signage or all, you know, all types of signage either has to be lit. With reverse backlit illumination, which is also called halo illumination, so that Smithfield sign. That sign would have an opaque. Opague sign face, the light can't pass through the the channel letters, it reflects backwards and creates a halo effect. And in some cases, it's a little bit less intense than a direct lit channel letter sign. And then even still other communities, right, require that. All signs have to be externally illuminated and illuminated, and here's an example of not a small sign. But a fairly large sign that's externally illuminated using using goose neck lamps. And a lot of communities that would do this would require that the lighting be downlit. We currently allow for externally illuminated signs with flood lamps, there is not a requirement that they be downward. You can mount them on the ground and and have that light illuminate upwards and. Depending on the application, that may not be the best outcome for glare or protection of the the dark night sky. So I think that maybe gives you a good overview of some of the regulatory best practices. And Holly will go over policy considerations.
Mayor Badger Jack, one second.
Yes, please.
Y'all have given a really good thorough report. You talked a lot about streetlights and residentials. What brought this to the forefront was commercial lighting that was seen directly even across to our neighbors in the sound and manio. It was had nothing to do with residential, it didn't have anything to do with streetlights. But it was more a case of what can we do or what do we need to do? To affect some change with lighting that is so intrusive it's seen all the way across the sound. To me, that was the issue that brought it forward, and I know y'all have taken a really comprehensive look at it. But nothing I've seen so far addresses any of that.
So I would, I would. I'm happy to go back and and explain what would address.
Don't need to go back, Michael, I'm sorry, I I appreciate that, but the streetlights are not what. The interest is, and I know we've got new changes, Dominion doesn't make lights, but it's more a case in the commercial zone, not the residential zone, please.
Yeah, I I understand that and apologies, I think the streetlights were intended to. Demonstrate some of the issues that could be. That could be associated with all lights, so. I would tell you that the correlated color temperature of lights that are on commercial property. The the new technologies, new LED technologies and the the need to regulate those with. Potentially the bug rating, I think would address the concerns. So I apologize if if it was not apparent, but the intent here was to. Present to you, these are the concepts that would address all of the lighting issues broadly. They would be applicable to just commercial. Or they could be applicable more broadly than that. But I do feel like the concepts that we're presenting would address the concerns that the board raised previously.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome.
Holly.
Thank you. Our comprehensive plan adopted in two thousand seventeen. Does a great job of documenting the town's longstanding commitment. Of a dark sky community, that was a value that was expressed by the advisory committee as being very important. And the policies contained in the plan. Are supportive of the dark night sky as well as there are specific actions that support evaluating and modernizing. Our lighting ordinances. That's policy LU sixteen and policy LU seventeen, I won't go in detail with those, they're contained in your memo. And we developed some conclusions as staff or next steps that. We would recommend based on all the research that you've heard about today. That we would take in order to address lighting that the board may consider as options. First step would be some type of lighting assessment. We recommend maybe doing that closer to the summer season where we go out and document. Any type of problematic lighting and work with property owners to correct those. We would recommend also considering up updates to our ordinance. As Michael has previously mentioned, possibly looking at lighting through zones. Maybe looking at areas along the corridor, having in commercial area maybe being more lenient. Whereas those areas that are closer to the sound or the ocean maybe are more protected. We would also recommend looking at updating the regulations to be more specific and comprehensive so that they're easier to address. And this would include a more comprehensive approach to get at that bug rating that Michael explained earlier. We would also consider looking at minimum regs for outdoor residential lighting specifically with floodlights, this was something that the planning board. Discussed the angle of the lighting, the color temps and the prohibited lights. This also showed up in the survey results, concerns about neighbors floodlights in their on their property and in their house. Also, when we look at the ordinance to develop steps, possibly separate standards for new development versus existing. To incorporate the best practices that we've discussed today and also to take a specific look. At the number and sizes of signage and the how those signs are lighted. The last piece to really take a look at is our education outreach and developing some type of. Educational outreach materials that are geared not only for. Residents and commercial business owners, but also to visitors and using. Partnering with certain organizations to help us get the word out to those specific audiences of people. So these things coincide with the recommendations that you see on your screen, these were some very. Specific steps that we felt like should be prioritized as we consider how to address lighting and moving. For it, again, I won't go back through those, you can. We we talked extensively about these and and we would welcome any feedback from the board as far as direction or. Specific lighting issues at this time.
Alright, thank you. Before I pass it to the board, just just quickly. I do think first that with regard to the property that brought this up in the first place. I do think the color of that lighting, the amount of lighting that's on the walls as opposed to the ground. And the area and intensity of the backlighting on. The backlit signs are all part of what's contributing to that problem. And I currently, I don't believe we regulate. How much lighting can be in a sign or how intense that face can be. Again, air air lighting ordinance is fairly simple, it's always been kind of foot candles on the ground. That's the information that we've always asked for and and. That doesn't address anything that's occurring at that property and and I might suggest. Two pronged approach, I appreciate the depth of what the the staff is doing. But development continues to occur and if if we can. Take a commercial property like that and sort of cut to the chase on. Some of those regulations, I think that that would be be helpful while we continue to look at the other issues. So then saying that. I have questions about about two things that I think may be difficult to capture. What what do we, what do we do if anything about? And commercial owner who simply relamps the fixtures that are there, which doesn't require a permit. Wouldn't trigger a site plan review or anything else. They unscrew what may have been an incandescent or fluorescent bulb and they screw in an LED. That completely changes the character of that and we don't really have a mechanism to to do that other than a complaint. And that's waiting for a complaint kind of does a disservice to the property owner who's. Expended money to do something, let's say in the nature of energy conservation that has then caused them a visual problem. So that's one question I have. The second is on the. Residential problem, which I I do think we've seen one problem there on Soundside Road that I think commissioners may be aware of. Where there was a new property that that was objectionable to a neighbor and did appear to be pretty well lit. The last thing we need to do is to ask. Residential applicants to produce a lighting plan, we already, you you know, that that just that just bogs everything down. And probably doesn't answer the question, so. Is there a way? Is there any middle ground between a residential lighting plan and waiting for complaints? If you can find some magical middle ground there that would address that, I think that that could be could be helpful. So with just those two observations, I'll I'll ask the board if and I'll go go alphabetically here, Kevin.
Mayor, thank you and and thank you, Michael, and your staff for the for the report. One of your recommendation was to update the U D O to address new lighting technology and I think. That right there is where I'm at, let's focus on that with commercial. I'm not interested right now with how I how I understand everything of trying to address, I'm sorry, trying to regulate. Single family residential standards, I think we do enough. Our town, you can drive from town to town here on the here on the beach, and I think we do a great job, I think we just need to address. Some issues commercially with the new technology and lighting that has come up. Thank you, Mayor.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Tahin.
Thank you, Mayor, I agree with your comments about how we try to move forward. I don't believe that residential is anything that we're interested in doing. I think doing a survey of the summer is probably not the goal of the board. I think what we need to do is try to figure out what our problem is and try to address it. We've seen an example of what the problem is that was brought forward by residents of other communities as well as this community. And it may, it's simply to me a matter of technology of LEDs and how the. Color spectrum goes, that's how we need to move forward. Addressing the U D O comprehensively, if it's going to take months and months and months, I don't see that as being a viable option. We've seemed to get bogged down some with semantics. But I would like to see us take a look at some of the commercial issues. It's more the new technology, not the old technology that we're having issues with. And how we, how do we address that moving forward as well as how the mayor says, how do you? Catch somebody, not catch somebody, wrong phrase, how do you educate somebody about what the town's values of lighting are versus a stick? And that's, I think that's one thing we need to move forward with. Is how to how to better address comprehensively commercial lighting under new technology, that's what brought it forward at the beginning. So I do think we need to leave residential alone and not spend our wheels and months of time on that. Thank you.
Commissioner Fuller.
Thank you. At this time, I'm not interested in pursuing anything with residential. I think this all started with a specific issue. And I would like that we immediately pursue the specific issue with action. I I feel like sometimes we get a lot of studying done with no results. So I'd like to see some. Movement on the particular issue as fast as we can with action. Third, everything y'all presented, I think was really interesting and good. And it's always interesting and good when you agree with it. And I I would like for us to continue to pursue that, but not at the expense of action. And then fourth, totally off the charts, we have two. Kill Devil Hill streetlights on the bypass, two sets of Kill Devil Hill streetlights on the bypass. That run from Dirty Dick's across the street to the Old Kelly's. The reason they were put there no longer exist and I would like. To recommend that we do whatever we can to remove those. Thank you.
Interesting, okay, Commissioner Sears.
I I would agree with the other commissioners on the residential versus commercial, I think that. We did have a specific drive for this, the education and and the 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 research that the staff has done is amazing. And what they provided, but that doesn't bring us any closer to the what we asked for with the resolution. When we started this project, so I would agree with Commissioner Fuller and let's see some action. With something instead of let's dwell on it for another six months. Thank you.
Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify something for for the benefit of the public. And I think it was a comment that that you had made, Mr. Mayor, that. So currently, if you have a commercial site and you're changing the fixture out on that site. We would require a zoning permit to change that fixture out. If you're changing just the bulb or the lamp, we would not, but you do run the risk of. Creating a lighting condition that's noncompliant. Because you could be using a bulb that is casting more foot candles than is allowed under the code and and was was generated from the previous. Lamp, I would say that that's not likely. But we do see some issues with. When that happens with the angle of of a fixture being changed to be made noncompliant, so. That's part of the outreach with Dominion because we we found that they're doing quite a bit of this work. And making sure that they're aware of our regulations, even though they're exempt from electrical permits. We want to make sure they're aware and that they're making sure their property owners is aware that if they're changing lighting conditions, if they're changing fixtures, if they're changing bulbs out. Our existing regulations may affect that. And again, I think what we found and and what the board's pointed out, they don't necessarily affect them as effectively. With LED lights, so we'll we'll definitely work on some amendments to to address that.
Well, I was thinking more about, you know, look, thinking about the subject property that's been problematic. You know, one of the, one of the issues that I presume that you will eventually have in a regulatory package that we would, we would approve. Would be that when there was a site plan submitted, we may regulate color intensity by degree Kelvin. You know, you can use, you can lamp those fixtures within a certain range and we're probably, you know, I will. Go ahead and say we're probably going to go more toward the warmer, more yellow range in terms of the town preference. As opposed to the blue white range for those, because I think that's part of the problem with the property that we're that we're talking about. But but there's nothing today that says that another commercial property owner. That has some lights that may be lighting their walls or under a porch or something like that. Couldn't change the bulbs in those and all of a sudden it's blue white. And it looks like it really dramatically would change the appearance, I mean, people. You you know, I mean, as an architect, I've looked at lighting and I'm somewhat aware of this and. And and you could really dramatically change the way a site in the building looked. By buying some energy efficient, really blue. Lamps and and we would hate it all of a sudden, a building that we'd always thought was great was all of a sudden like, oh geez.
Agreed.
Alright, thank you, staff, appreciate all of your time. Do look forward to, you know, a comprehensive solution, also look forward to. Sooner than later, some perhaps some ordinance amendments that would address. The immediate terms while we continue to, I I I do think overall we want to improve the town long term. And we we have been proud of our lighting standards in the past and and we do long term want to continue to improve that situation. We also want to tackle. We don't, we don't want a second occurrence of the thing that we're all kind of wound up about too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's, if we can, we've been at it for about two hours here and I know, I know we've also got a workshop. Can we take about a five to ten minute recess here before we go to the next item? Alright, then. Karen and Carolyn, let's, let's take a ten minute recess. All right, so the board has returned from its recess and the next item on the agenda is new business, and that would be committee reports. And so I will ask the board members if anyone has a report to make. Commissioner Brinkley.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cahoon.
Thank you, Mayor. The Gov. Ed Committee met for the first time this year. We have a new member in Nancy Cavendish from Duck. Our budget projections currently look on the very positive side, even after COVID. We have hired one new employee to be an assistant and take over a lot of the videography roles. And it's a pretty productive meeting. We considered several grant applications that were all approved by the full committee. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Fuller.
Just the Deer County Tourist Bureau, we have, we have new members. We have not met. But two points, I think there is a little bit of movement on the tourist bureau's part in trying to pay the town money for its share of the event site. I don't have any detail on that, but if I do, I'll let you know as soon as possible. And then the next thing, which America Hoon and I would know is that it appears that the event site development committee will start to meet again very soon. I don't know what that means, other than we'll get a report from somebody and we'll see where it goes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Sears.
The Soundside Road Committee met again. A lot of work being put in by two citizens on the group, which is very helpful. I'd like to thank them for that. Hopefully, if everything works out after our next meeting, we'll be able to bring something back before the board.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Did everyone receive, there was a letter, I think we all got yesterday from a Soundside resident. So so your committee will be aware of that.
Correct.
All right, great, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your service on that committee and look forward to hearing your your report. The next item is consideration of appointments and reappointing to the planning board and the Board of Adjustment. And you have before you that that you will see that make an appointment to the planning board and that Megan Vaughn's term expires this month. She's interested in being reappointed and that Tina Adheral's alternate term expires on the Board of Adjustment. And she is interested in being reappointed. So a discussion or a motion on this with regard to filling those positions would be appropriate.
I make a motion to keep Megan Vaughn on the planning board.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to reappoint Megan Vaughn to the planning board. Any discussion? Hearing none, then Madam Clerk, will you poll the board, please?
Yes, Commissioner Brinkley, your vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller. Commissioner Renee Cahoon.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sears.
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon.
Aye, thank you. The next item would be then the appointment to the Board of Adjustment.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to reappoint Tina Adheral in her alternate position in the Board of Adjustment.
My second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to reappoint Ms. Adheral to her alternate position. Any discussion? Hearing none, then Madam Clerk, will you please poll the board?
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller.
Aye.
Commissioner Renee Cahoon.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sears.
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda would be the town attorney, any issues from the town attorney. So John.
No, sir, at this time, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to present to the board.
Okay, great, thank you. The next item on our agenda is a presentation from the town manager about the beach nourishment project. And Greg, I assume you have a way that you intend to proceed about this. But one of the things that, you know, we do need to address is the alternate one, alternate two question. And I don't intend to to open that up at the beginning of this or make a presentation first, but just let you turn it over to you, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor. So so right, as you indicated, we have two items on the agenda related to the beach nourishment. The consideration of initiating municipal service district process and the request for formal action with one of the alternatives on beach nourishment. So of course, we held a workshop last week. I think we spent probably two hours or so, covered a lot of information, both from staff and consultant on the two alternatives and the and the MSDs. And based on that discussion, we're just go back, there are two alternatives that were considered for the for beach nourishment. The alternative one was the FEMA project supplemented with coastal storm damage mitigation fund grant revenue. And that would have a total sand placement of about 567,000 cubic yards located in reaches two, three, and four. It also had like 480,000 of town funds as part of that project to essentially funds sand fencing as well as vegetative enhancement. Alternative two was the FEMA with this with the coastal storm damage mitigation funds. And basically a town project with with requests for county funding in there of 1.47 million cubic yards. And that covered reaches one through four, essentially 10 miles. And we'll come back to back to that on those two on those two alternatives. And and ask for for board approval on on one of those alternatives. So with the the MSDs that were presented, the board proposed creating four additional MSDs. And they were noted as being, of course, from Whalebone Junction to Bonnet Street to include all properties east of US 158. Whalebone Junction to the southern town limits to include all properties in South Maggs Head. From Bonnet Street to Eighth Street to include all properties east of US 158. From Bonnet Street to Eighth Street to include all properties east of NC 12. We also know that these new MSDs depend on the alternative selected could be taxed at a nominal rate to pay for current planning activities as well as to supplement the town's beach nourishment fund. So the action that was in, I know in our handout, we included the the map with the reaches and and with those slides. And so the proposed action was to discuss essentially that those proposed municipal service districts and have board direct staff to prepare the report, map, and plan for those services. As well as then the follow up on alternative one or two. And let me hit just a little bit briefly on that. We certainly went over all that information last week. There are if that's included in attachment two. If the board desires to proceed with alternative one, the 567,000 cubic yards project. There there are essentially five paragraphs that to to address. And two was act, I should, and so the first one, action to authorize staff to proceed forward with planning design permitting. I don't think I need to redraw all those, but on on number seven, we had some additional language. Action to authorize interim town manager to execute a contract change order in the amount of 195,855 with moth that nickel. For the performance of additional geotechnical investigation. That was since that inclusion of the geotechnical investigation of the offshore borrow error borrow area. And that certainly came as a recommendation from the town attorney to be more specific with that language. Alternative two, if the board proceeded to go with that, was to address those paragraphs one, three, five, seven, and eight. I don't think there's, Mayor, anything else I need to go maybe address other than then if you have specific questions for town engineer, finance director in regards to the MSDs or the or the project.
Well, let's um, let's take these obviously separately.
Yes.
The first being creation of the districts. And while the the next action is a little more complicated and involves several items. I believe I understand that the only thing that we need here, if we're interested in proceeding with the creation of these, is that motion to direct staff to prepare the study, the maps and the report that's necessary for the board's eventual approval to to initiate those districts. That was, I believe, and and this meeting is the critical date for us to direct that preparation in order for us to be able to stay on schedule. So I would ask the board on that topic, is there any discussion first or Commissioner Cahoon?
Sorry, Mayor, I was going to make a motion, but with one point of clarity before I do. We talked about Whalebone Junction, South and Whalebone Junction North. For clarity's sake and to line up with the projects, could we instead substitute Whalebone Junction Gulf Stream Street North, Gulf Stream Street South? That's an identifiable landmark.
Yes, that would be more appropriate than Whalebone, which is not a not a actual fixed geographic location, so yes.
And may Mayor be and Mayor Cahoon and Commissioner Cahoon, may I interject before you make your motion, please?
Yes, please.
The only thing that I was really looking at with the MSDs was should we create an MSD for Bonnet Street North to Eighth Street? And then the Beach Road Oceanward? And then another MSD that includes the entire area as shown? Should there be two MSDs that would line up with what is to the south if we did it that way? If we do it the way it's presented, then I don't see there's a separate just oceanfront from Bonnet Street North for the beachfront.
So so that would be a total then of five districts rather than four. So that we had, we maintained basically an oceanfront and west side alignment for the full length of the town.
Exactly, and that's, yes, to me, that just makes more sense. But I I'm willing to vote for the what's presented, but I just wanted to bring that up and see if people thought that that had any substance to it.
Commissioner Cahoon, I'll go back to you first, since you were on the verge of making a a motion. What are what are your thoughts on five districts as described rather than four?
I have no objection to that. The question I have what I did not see in the MSDs as presented was from Whalebone Junction, or excuse me, from Gulf Stream Street to Bonnet Street. It didn't say anything about any properties in between the highways, or did I miss that? Or was that Commissioner Fuller's?
The way I see it, that is proposed District Three.
Okay, thank you.
Because it proposed District Three includes oceanfront to the bypass. So if you're east of Virginia Dare Trail, you're in two MSDs. And if you're west of the Beach Road, you are in only one MSD. Whereas in, well, that's how I look at it. If I'm wrong, tell me.
I believe that's correct.
Or do you make an emotion, Commissioner Fuller?
Excuse me?
I would yield the floor to make to you make an emotion rather than me at this time.
First, before before we do that, on on the question, since Commissioner Fuller asked what other folks thought of that. Commissioner Sears, any any thoughts about that district alignment? You're muted, Mike. Mike, if you were coming.
I had screens all messed up and couldn't get back to the video. I don't have a problem with what Commissioner Fuller's stating on that. That gives them more alignment throughout, like he stated. I was just reviewing back the breakdown on that before I made that call.
Thank you.
I support what Commissioner Fuller said. I like it that it better lines up with what we have existing and what we're proposing.
Okay, yeah, and I can't, you know, we don't know what the circumstances are, but it does gives us more flexibility on on rates going going forward. And and again, being consistent and and the way folks are treated. So that that will bring us back then to not shutting down discussion, but to a motion for the purposes of discussion.
Can I clarify, get a clarification real quick?
Yes, sure.
So on the map, there is a district shown from Bonnet Street to Eighth Street, running from the bypass to the oceanfront. That is District Six. And then there's also a district shown from Bonnet Street to Eighth Street, running from the Beach Road to the Oceanfront. That is District Five. And so those two districts, and then you have two more, three and four, that would be four new districts. And my question is, is that what Commissioner Fuller was asking for? And if so, then I think that's consistent with what's on the map.
Then I apologize, the way Andy described it is exactly what I was suggesting, and apparently it's already there.
Just just wanted to make sure.
So so actually, if you are between the Beach Road and the bypass, I mean, excuse me, the Beach Road and the ocean. And you're north of Bonnet Street, you are, if we adopt this, you are in a a fet in two different districts.
That's correct.
Okay, then I'm fine. I'm fine with how it's presented.
Very good. Then a motion to direct staff to prepare the the maps, study, report for the implementation of these MSDs would be appropriate.
I'll make that motion, Mayor, this is Renee.
With your correction to use Gulf Stream Street rather than Whalebone as a designator.
That's correct.
Thank you, is there a second to that?
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, heard a couple of seconds in there. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, I'll ask you to poll the board, please.
Okay, Commissioner Brinkley, your vote.
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller. Commissioner Renee Cahoon.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sears.
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Greg, anything further to add before we discuss the the two alternatives?
No, I think as we know, on those are, it's laid out, the request for formal action on in attachment two. But the amended language on paragraph seven. I think one of the things is we noted from the the workshop last week in terms of of some of the difference in the two projects. I mean, certainly, the alternative one was is much smaller, but but almost fully grant funded between FEMA and the and the CDSM funds and small portion of town funds. And with alternative two, we had, we have the the loss of about 3.2 million in FEMA funds because of the way they FEMA works that that financing. So I think those are some of the things the board was taking into consideration as well as how maybe these projects potentially lined up both with Dare County funding, the other northern beach communities. But I think the fact that with the small project, we could also concentrate the sand where it was needed most. Rather than spreading up a small amount over a large area was 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 beneficial.
All right, thank you. And I will, I will poll the board, but I I will offer when I left the workshop last week. Um, I was, I was strongly inclined to alternative two despite the overlapping financing. At that point, I felt as though with the additional municipal service districts we would have, you know, we could, we could handle that. But as I, as I've thought about it further, the the thing that really swayed me was that looking at this breakdown that staff had prepared, that mobilization and demobilization was exactly the same for the two projects. So there was no mobilization, demobilization efficiency for the larger project. And with the larger project, without a difference in mobilization, demobilization, we were passing up $3 million worth of FEMA uh, support. And so that that really changed my mind at that point. So I I circled back around to alternative one. As a as a preference, just really on that basis, to me, it would not be prudent to pass up that additional FEMA financing. So with that, I'll poll the board. I'll go in reverse this time. I'll go to Commissioner Sears.
I agree with you. After David Ryan's talk last week, I left with actually one on my mind, not two on my mind. The return on investments much larger and the fact that if we join up with all of the communities in an uncoordinated event, I don't know that their work can get done in a timely manner with the larger project overall. So I would be in favor of one.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Fuller?
Um, I'm in favor of the smaller project.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Cahoon?
Thank you. I also left last week initially thinking of alternative to the larger project. And I really appreciate David Ryan's comments after our workshop, after we had discussed what option we wanted to do, pointing out that it probably would be better to do option one and concentrate the sand in the southern part of town. I'm very appreciative of staff's work on this, all both proposals, and giving us some guidance. So I would support the first option of one with the sand being concentrated to the south.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Brinkley?
I prefer option one, just as for the same reasons the other commissioners do. Thank you.
Good. Um, hearing that then and and understanding there can be further discussion, then a motion would be in order to proceed, let's say, do we, do we have to do this in a bunch of bunch of steps? I I think we probably should. So let's take this, if we're going to do alternative one, then we need to proceed with a number of paragraphs, and that would be starting with item two or paragraph two. That would be action to authorize staff to proceed with the planning, design, permitting, bidding and construction administration for an approximate 567,000 cubic yard post Dorian project in reaches two, three, and four. And a motion to that effect would be appropriate.
Same move.
Again.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, you're going to do a bunch of this for the next few minutes. Carolyn, would you please poll the board?
Yes, Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller, your vote? Commissioner Fuller?
Oh, uh. Uh.
Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
And Sears?
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon?
Aye. Thank you. The next item would be paragraph four, which would be action to authorize staff to modify the existing coastal storm damage mitigation grant application to include the FEMA public assistance request and this sand volume of 508,070 cubic yards with a CSDM grant award amount of $1,408,247.19. A motion to that effect would be in order.
Same move. This is Renee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. The second was from Commissioner Sears. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please poll the board. Carolyn, you're muted.
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Uh.
Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sears?
Aye.
Mayor Cahoon?
Aye.
Thank you.
Um, the the next item would be paragraph six, which would be action to authorize staff to modify the existing FEMA category G public assistance application to include the FEMA public assistance request amount of 508,070 cubic yards, the CSDM grant award amount of $1,408,247.19. A motion would be in order.
Same move.
Heard a motion and a second. Who was the motion from?
Mike.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, please poll the board.
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Uh.
Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sears?
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon?
Aye.
Thanks.
Uh, the next item is paragraph seven, which is modified. And so that would be action to authorize the interim town manager to execute a contract change order in the amount of $195,855 with Moffett and Nickel for the performance of additional geotechnical investigation of the offshore borrow area investigation for vibrocore sampling collection and geotechnical reporting as for environment permitting of a beach replacement slash maintenance project with an approximate volume of, is that the correct, 1,472,500 cubic yards?
That can't be right, Mayor.
That's not right.
Uh, this is David Ryan. We we went ahead and put in the maximum amount in there in this item to cover us for either alternative. So it could be modified to say up to 1,472,500. And then there's further explanation further down in this item.
Okay, thank you. Then I will, I will modify that to an approximate volume of up to 1,472,500 cubic yards. At the current time, it is uncertain whether the Division of Coastal Management will require supplemental geotechnical investigation for permitting of the offshore borrow source. If if it is determined that the hydrographic survey and analysis is sufficient for permitting needs, no action will be taken on the proposed contract amendment. If DCM determines vibrocore sampling and analysis is required, the board authorization will permit the interim town manager to execute a contract change order without delay to the project schedule. The geotechnical work will be conducted through a joint effort of Moffett and Nickel and Athena Technologies. And so a motion to that effect would be in order.
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, the change to this versus what we previously approved for the offshore study of the existing sites, what can we explain that a little better? Or can David or someone explain that a little better?
Yeah, I'll call on David if you're still on, please.
Yes. We had previously requested from the board funds to permit a hydrographic survey. And that survey was to do some initial investigation for the Division of Coastal Management to see if the borrows area could be permitted based upon the data that was presented from that survey. And so our our thought was that that information would be sufficient for DCM and permitting purposes. There is an outside chance that they could require additional geotechnical investigation. And this action, item seven, covers us just in case we need the additional geotech work. And and so it's not anticipated this work is going to be needed for this smaller project. But it is there for us to proceed with, should that be necessary.
David, that prior report was part of the information that we heard, I believe, that indicated that the borrow area had significantly refilled. Was was that the result we got from this, from the first study that we had authorized?
Um, we have not received the results from the first study. The we just received the survey data last Friday. And so now Moffett and Nickel is conducting a review and analysis of that data. And so not having that information in hand, there's still some uncertainties. This way, we're covered either way with this action.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussion? And this is the motion on paragraph seven. Hearing no further discussion then, and having the motion to approve on the floor, Madam Clerk, will you please poll the board?
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller, your vote?
Uh.
Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sears?
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon?
Aye. And the last item that we need to deal with is paragraph eight. Additional funding of $220,000 is requested from the Beach Nurishment Capital Reserve Fund balance due to the uncertainty of the need for additional geotechnical investigation within the Beach Nurishment Project Borrow Area. Since timing is the critical path for this project, staff is notifying the board of this future request to authorize the interim town manager to execute a change order to the existing Moffett and Nickel contract for an amount not to exceed $220,000. As necessary, this authorization will permit the change order process to be expedited and reduce potential delays to the project schedule. If funds are not required, staff can submit a request at a future meeting for an amendment to return the funds to the Beach Nurishment Maintenance Capital Project Fund. So the motion is to request the funds from the Capital Reserve in the amount not to exceed $220,000 and to authorize the town manager to execute the change order if necessary. A motion to that effect would be in order.
Same move.
And is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please poll the board?
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Uh.
Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sears?
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon?
Aye. Thank you. Greg, is there anything further that the board needs to do on this item?
I guess that question then for the Finance Director, Amy, on the that the the amendment in the back on the Beach Nurishment Maintenance Capital Project Ordinance. The board need to act on that as well for the budget amendment?
Um, budget amendment 10 dot three because that would actually allow us to actually move the money from the capital project fund. So you kind of need two steps. You need one step to amend the ordinance, which is the amendment one, and then you need the budget amendment to to allow us to to move the funds into that fund to pay for it.
Okay, thank you. Right, so you have that, you have that budget amendment request uh, before you, and you've heard Amy's description of the, you know, what's what they need in order to act. So a motion would be in order to approve the budget amendment request.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve budget nourishment, but Beach Nurishment Maintenance Capital Project Ordinance Amendment. Is it number one, Amy?
Yes, ma'am.
As presented.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, will you please poll the board?
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Uh.
Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sears?
Aye.
Mayor Cahoon?
Aye. Thank you. And thank you, staff, for all of your work getting us to this point on both the project and the and the the districts. We really appreciate it. It's been kind of a a back burner, well, not back burner, it wasn't that. This has been a an issue that's been out before the board for a year or more. It's really nice to to pull this to a conclusion. So again, thank you. Uh, the next item.
I'm so sorry, Mayor, may I? I'm so sorry. Um, I just wanted to make sure that amendment 10 dot three was also approved by the board. That was the last the last budget amendment was the last item under J. It was for a total of $440,000.
So Mayor, that that was the item, yeah, right after amendment one, it's the budget amendment request for the 440,000.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's okay, because that's, I was, I was confusing myself because that was actually the one I was looking at while we were doing the other thing. So I apologize. So that would be that last item, which is the spreadsheet essentially, which is the the budget amendment ten in the amount of $440,000. So a motion would be in order.
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then Madam Clerk, will you please poll the board?
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller?
Uh.
Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sears?
Aye.
Mayor Cahoon?
Aye. Okay, staff, before we move on, was that it?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Then the next item on our uh, agenda would be the Board of Commissioners agenda. Um, and so I will go alphabetically this time. Commissioner Brinkley?
Uh, nothing, Mayor.
Okay, Commissioner Cahoon?
I'm good, thank you.
Commissioner Fuller?
Sorry, I got two things. Number one, we received a letter from John CC about the possibility of doing sand fencing a little bit different than what we have been doing. And I don't know if there's any response from staff or not, or if we need response. But what he suggests looked very good to me. And I don't know if the board needs to discuss it, or we just need to get a, something back from staff concerning what, what John's recommending. And for those that don't know, John was, is retired from the Division of Coastal Management. And he was the person that's responsible, or was responsible for issuing permits for like sand fencing. So he's not speaking without some knowledge. And what he suggests just made a lot of sense to me. And I'd like to have either us discuss it or staff look at it and get, get back to us.
I, I agree. I, I think, not having heard from, from staff, could we at our next meeting then, Greg, have a response to staff from Mr. CC's letter?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then the second one is, we did receive a letter from Mitt Jernigan, who's the president of the POA at the Village about the extension of the multi-use path. And I'm not sure if we're going to talk about it or not, but I'd like to talk about it at some point in time in, and, and in support of putting the path in. But I, I don't know where we are on that. So if somebody could just let me know where we are, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, Mayor, I was going to, as we get into the, kind of our pre-budget workshop here after the meeting, I was going to briefly address that in terms of kind of the timing of when we'll be looking at the capital projects and, and how the board may want to consider those priorities.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sears?
Nothing, sir.
Okay, thank you. Did I poll everybody? I think I did. Then the, the next item in the agenda would be the Mayor's agenda. The only thing I have is, we've had some emails in the last couple of days. As you know, we have, our recruiting firm has published a brochure for recruitment of the new town manager. And one of the issues addressed in that brochure is a requirement of, or is place of residence. And the question before us is, do we wish to require in their screening of candidates and in our hiring that that manager be required to live within the, the boundaries of the town of Nags Head? Commissioner Fuller raised this question, expressing a preference for that to be required. You also should have seen a response from our search firm about how they are recommending communities who are engaged in search and why they may or may not require occupancy within the town. So I will ask, I'm going to go backwards this time. Commissioner Sears, what are your thoughts on the residency requirement?
I think that if we have a town manager that is vested in the town of Nags Head, that we'd like to see him be in the town of Nags Head, be part of the community. I understand that the issue was brought up on cost of living as being a downfall to that. But I don't know that you can live elsewhere and understand what Nags Head has to bring if you can't be in the town all the time.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Commissioner Fuller?
I guess, two points. Obviously, if I brought it up, I have a stated opinion. I, I do think that the manager does need to live in the town. Historically, one of my questions has always been, and I think like with Greg, what do you consider more important, the town you work for or your profession? And I'm sure Greg could tell you, as a professional city manager, there's a strong commitment to the profession. And if you are, if you are a true city manager, you're already very committed to that role in your life and what it means. But to me personally, I believe that a manager needs to be equally committed to the community he serves. And I strongly agree with Mike that to understand that and be part of that, you need to be part of the community. Now, that being said, I would be more than happy to agree that the manager does not need to immediately need to move to Nags Head, but within a period of like, whatever, eight to 12 months. I, I would be looking at, at Mike to answer some of those questions. The questions being, at that salary range, we're looking at hiring, do you think a manager can find an appropriate living accommodation in Nags Head? From what I know, I would say yes. But from what you know, if you give them eight to 12 months to relocate here, is, is that sufficient?
I, I would say so. I don't think our fire chief or police chief had any problem locating a house within a reasonable amount of time.
And, and, and that's my, that's my point. I think what we're offering allows for people to be in Nags Head. I think the value to be in Nags Head. And I think giving them sufficient time to find an accommodation that they prefer, not just have to rush a decision, would, would be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Webb. Commissioner Cahoon?
As Commissioner Brinkley can tell you, I'm always a proponent of department heads and the manager living in the town of Nags Head. I am, I do however, think that flexibility needs to be allowed as to the time to find a place to live. So residency right away would not be required for me because they need time to look and find a place. But I would prefer that a manager in Nags Head. But give, given some flexibility at the beginning.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Brinkley?
I'm in favor of our town manager living in the town. However, I understand the need to be flexible with giving them time to found housing, so I have no problem with that. Thank you.
It sounds like the appropriate thing to do to ask them to, to word that in such a way that the expectation is that the new town manager will live within the, the confines of the town with, yeah, I'm not sure that they should put a time limit on it, but a, a, because we're going to negotiate a contract, I assume, at some point. But with reasonable accommodation for time to make that transition.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think that's a reasonable way to approach the situation. I think, I think everybody's on the same page about the importance of that element of somebody's qualifications. I can tell you that it's not required by law, but it's, it's a common practice to require a municipal manager to live within the, the community. It is a legal requirement for a school superintendent to live within the district. And what we do in those contracts is we usually provide what we consider to be a reasonable period of time for the superintendent to establish that residency of anywhere from three to six months. So which are proposing is, is even more reasonable and flexible than that. So I think for purposes of the announcement, I think simply indicating that the town would require someone to establish residency, but we provide a reasonable time to do so would be sufficient language for those purposes.
Oh, thank you. Board, I don't, it doesn't sound like, this is something that we need to take a formal vote on. If we can all simply affirm that, that what we've discussed is, is what, how we are directing the, the consultant to reword that, then, then we'll proceed. So Greg, if you will, they may be watching, but Greg, if you will just follow up with them and have them make that change?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is other business. If there is other business that anyone knows of to come before the board? Hearing none, then we come to the issue of recessing this meeting to the budget workshop. And it's lunchtime. Where most of us are, some of us are at home, some of us are not. So is an hour a reasonable amount of time for everyone to get something to eat and reconvene? I don't hear objection to that. So then a, a motion to recess this meeting. Let, let's make it, we're at 12:15, let's make it an hour and 15 minutes. So that would be to recess the meeting to 1:30. So a motion to that effect would be in order?
To move. Second.
I have a motion and a second to recess this meeting until 1:30, reconvene for the budget workshop. So Madam Clerk, please poll the board.
Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller? Commissioner Renee Cahoon?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Sears?
Aye.
And Mayor Cahoon?
Aye. Very good, the.
A quick question. Do we stay on our computers or do we log out and log back in?
I believe you can either. Karen?
Mayor, since we're going to be taking a break for, till 1:30, I'm going to end the meeting and then you would just rejoin a few minutes before 1:30.
Okay, same number, everything?
Yes, same, same length, same number, same passcode.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Then we will stand in recess until, wait, did we vote on that? Did you poll the board, Carolyn?
Yes, I did.
Very good. Thank you. Then I'll see, we'll see everybody at 1:30. Thank you. Commissioners is, has reconvened following this morning's meeting for our budget workshop. And with that, I'll refer to Greg. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So really, the, the purpose of this meeting is to really be kind of that pre-budget workshop and more so just to get really input from the commission before we as staff start working on the budget so that we're clear on what your priorities are. I mean, we certainly have things which help bring clarity to that. Beach Nurishment, clear direction, right? So we had a study session a few weeks ago on street maintenance and stormwater. And I think the board was pretty clear that you'd like to see more funding to kind of speed up the implementation of that plan. Number of initiatives have come out of the, this fall strategic visioning, provided the SAS report to the board on where, where we are at in terms of implementing that vision. And there's certainly some budget implications within that report. And and we, we have some ongoing studies that may not line up, you know, perfectly with, when we have to make decisions in the budget. We just got started on the Public Works Master Plan. And at this point, I would, I would even hate to venture a guess as to what those recommendations will be out of that study, but certainly we're going to need to have, make more capital investment in public works facilities. I think everyone recognizes that and how that can be potentially phased, I think will be an important part of, of that study and, and what's brought forward to the board. We also have a compensation and classification study that's ready to get underway March 1st. Signed the contract on it. We know there'll probably be some implications from that compensation study. So I think there'll be some things that, where we may look to, you know, reserve some funds, some designated reserve so the board can implement that as possibly after the budget's initially adopted. So one of the things, Commissioner Fuller, I talked about the other day too, was that this is a year where we, where we do a two-year budget process. And, and certainly some of Webb's concern, and I understand that as if, if as a board, you, you lock yourself in on a two-year budget and then you have turnover of the board at the next election, well then, then that, th- those new board members would feel that they didn't have input into the budget. I'd say from the, from the staff perspective, we view that the two-year budget is really a financial planning tool. It's, that second year is something that's not, in a sense, has that same type of formal authority as, as what the budget does. So it really doesn't preclude the board from changing priorities. So what it really allows to do, it allows us to do is plug in those projected personnel costs, other operational costs, capital improvement items. And certainly, when you look out more than one year, it can reveal where there's maybe some potential issues from a funding standpoint. And certainly, the more you can look out in terms of financial planning, the better, I think, for both the board and staff perspective. But certainly from our end, if the board wanted to change that cycle on that two-year budget to where that lined up with board elections, that can be done as well. So hit on a couple of things about Public Works Master Plan COP study. One of the items from last year that was kind of put on hold, I think, with the others, with the CIP items due to COVID was a building security plan. We certainly anticipate coming back to the board with some, with some recommendations in regards to building security. A study was done on that. We have the capital improvement work session scheduled for March 24th. And as I think we indicated, as I indicated earlier in the meeting, request we had from the Village Homeowners Association regarding multi-use path and, and where the priority for completing section that impacts them, where that fits in with the town priorities. Certainly the idea, we'll, we'll come back with some recommendations to the board during CIP review or certainly get your input on that. Another project out there, it's not a general fund, but out of the water fund is on water meters. And that's changing out to meters that have that remote reading capability. I think that's been talked a bit in the past and currently the interim Public Works Director and, and the Water Superintendent are, are, are gathering information from various vendors and, and will be coming forward at some point with some recommendations to the board on how to proceed with what type of system and, and remote water meters. So I think really, as I indicated, this is just a chance really for the board to say, we have, you know, some additional priorities that we want to make sure that staff tries to incorporate into the budget. And so with that, Mayor, certainly we can open it up for any questions, comments from the board.
Thank you. And, and I'll do that. Just, you and I had spoken about the public works improvements there and without possibility of knowing, without knowing by the time we need to close out the budget, what that number might be. But also understanding that it's a fairly high priority for the board. Would you talk a little bit about how we would set aside some money potentially to be able to start during this fiscal year if there was something identified? If there was a piece of that work identified that we wanted to start on?
Sure. I think there are a couple. Sure. I think there are a couple of different ways to do that. And certainly within probably the next couple of months, maybe we will have some initial concepts from the consultant who's working so that we can, you know, have a ballpark on some numbers to work with. I know what I've done in the past is created some designated reserve funds out of whether it's the general fund or other funds as well, because certainly Public Works, it's going to include more than just the general fund in terms of potential improvement. So I think that's something I would look to work with Amy on in terms of how we designate some reserve funds for the board. Amy, do you have any, any thoughts on that?
Hi, I'm sure. I mean, I, I guess I could say that I was at Killable Hills if we're kind of using the same master plan or architects. I was at Killable Hills when we implemented. They did it in different phases. So they didn't do it all at once. So I think I was there for two of the three phases and they financed it. I know in the last phase, I had talked to Beverly and they ended up just paying, using that they had built up their fund balance. And they just ended up paying for it in cash. So we could certainly phase it in and pay debt on it. I know that there is currently debt because we ran into the same problem as well. There's already debt on the public works because of the fuel tanks. So what would happen is whatever bank we chose, it might be the same bank or a different one, they would just take over that debt as well. But, you know, we could, we could talk about, like Greg hit on, we have both a water capital reserve and a general fund, capital reserve fund where we're accumulating funds. So we can certainly, you know, just like we do with parks and paths or stormwater. The board could add to that ordinance that we already have and set aside funds for that or streets or any other project that we have. So that's kind of what I've done in the past and kind of mirrors what, what Greg had discussed as well.
Thank you. With, with that, you know, having my question, initial question answered, I'll, I'll poll through the board and understand board members, this is not the only opportunity to
Right.
get ideas. We're, we're gonna, we can go around here as many times as we want to. But just to get things on the, on the table, I'll come to you. Kevin, what's been on your mind as far as, as far as budget?
Just, just initially, just off the top of my head, the public work master plan that we've already talked about, I think is, is a priority for me. And with Amy's information she just provided, can you tell me what the debt is on the fuel tank, what debt we're currently holding on that about?
Oh, the, well, the debt, it's, I guess it's not so much the debt, it's the, the fact that when we, when we did the sidewalk project, the Dally Park solar lighting and then the fuel tanks, I mean, the fuel tanks were only a hundred or less than $200,000, but they had to, I guess, I guess, sorry, my, the better word I should have used was collateralize because the sidewalk, we don't own the right of way. They can't, they needed something to collateralize. So they collateralized the public works complex. Since that's where we did, because it was kind of less doubt, we could have collateralized Dally Park, but that's kind of more high profile. So we just did public work. So it's not a problem. The bank would just have to retake that note. Because they would overtake that collateralization, I guess, which it, it's not a hurdle to overcome by any, any means that we can't overcome. So.
Understood. Mayor, also the pay-in class study that's, will be started next month. I'm anxious to get the, the results back on, on that. And then really, you know, last year during COVID, we did a lot of cuts to the different departments. And then in the fall, they came back and gave us some additional information that they wanted funded, wanted funded. I'm anxious to get the, the department's requests to see where we're at with that to, to make sure that we're giving them everything they need to, to work with, within their departments.
Good. Thank, thank you. Commissioner Fuller?
I guess the, the, just a question. The first thing on the public works. Have we made a decision about, are we going to try to remove the AEC? Or are we keeping the AEC? Because you can't do any work until you make that decision.
I'm not aware that the board, the, the board certainly hasn't made that decision. I don't, I don't think that has been brought to us as a, as a recommendation. So Andy, can you speak to that perhaps in terms of how the project has been framed with regard to that?
We had a, a meeting yesterday with the town engineer and planning department and the consultant. And we went through sort of the regulatory issues that affect these sites to try and get a comprehensive inventory of, of, of the regulations that affect these sites. And several things came out of that. Obviously, Commissioner Fuller's statement about the AEC, that, that is a, a primary issue that'll affect the development of those sites. Another issue is the question of whether or not we could consider recombining some of these properties and whether that would even benefit the town to do that, depending on what concept we move forward with. There are some special regulations that affect the bulk site in terms of putting yard debris on the ground. And then there's obviously the town regulations that, that affect you know, the public works facilities from the zoning standpoint. So we're compiling all that information. We do need to get some input from the board on those questions. And so there, I think there may be an opportunity to do that. I think Greg had mentioned that we're considering having a mid-month meeting. And so that might be the, the good opportunity to review some of that information with the board. And we'll try to find out on our end if we, if we want to remove that AEC. You know, what would be the process and timeframe for doing that? And how that would coincide with this potential schedule for the project? So all, all very good points.
Thank you. Commissioner Fuller?
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, I just don't see how anything could be done until that decision is made. And that, that's something that the board should have a lot of knowledge about before we even consider trying to remove the AEC because the AEC is not our designation, it's a state designation. So, and that's not, that's not a simple process per se. So, you know, I would like to prioritize public works, but with what's got to go on before we even start thinking about what we're doing, I already see that not even being in the next year's budget. Unfortunately, but you know.
The, what, what we could do with the AEC in place. And then we'll try to find out what, obviously what we could do without it. The AEC affects not only Nag's Head, but also Killable Hills. So I don't know if there would be a joint action, you know, that we would need to consider, or whether we could just eliminate the Nag's Head portion. But we'll try to flesh all those issues out and bring them back to the board for discussion and have all the answers. So the board can, can make a decision.
Right. And, and obviously the AEC is there to protect Fresh Pond. And if we eliminate just the Nag's Head portion, that water doesn't know if it's in Nag's Head or Killable Hills.
Right.
So the line doesn't mean anything. It's, it's a, it's a Killable Hills and a Nag's Head issue. And it gets into a lot of development potential for Killable Hills that they haven't had. Because a lot of their commercial area sits around Fresh Pond, but it's not developed as intensely as it could be if the AEC wasn't there. So there, there's a lot of discussion around that, but I want to prioritize public works, but there's a lot of stuff that's got to go on before that. Anyway, okay.
To, to that, the only thing I'll say is that, you know, you bring out a lot of co- complex issues with public works and doing this project. And where we're likely going to be in, in the May timeframe around budget is a set of conceptual alternatives that the board will look at. And then a phasing plan that the board will discuss. And so from there, we know that, you know, if the board selects an alternative to move forward with in a plan, there's going to be extensive design and permitting of that. And so next fiscal year, we could expect a lot of that to be taking place if we move forward right away. And so a lot of this will take time. I'm not sure how that's going to coincide with the following year's budget, but it might be the following year's budget where we're actually considering construction funds. We'll, we'll have to try and lay out a schedule.
Right. I mean, I, I'd like to, I like to see shovels in the ground. I'm just looking at realistically, I don't think we're looking at shovels in the ground in the next fiscal year, but if we could, that'd be great. The next thing I'm extremely interested in is CIP. And did the delay in the CIP cause any compression that we know of? Or are we just taking the CIP and just dropping a year out and just moving it into the future? Or are we compressing, like if something was going to be bought in five years last year, or is it going to be five years now? Or is it going to be four years? So I'm looking at that compression factor as it relates to the CIP process. I don't have any information on the CIP. And this, this, here again, this is one of the things I talked with, with Greg earlier on. Historically, we've completed the CIP by January. Now, Amy and some other people may disagree, but I, I know when I was there, it was always, it, it was done. You didn't have to wait so late to get the CIP done. It could be, and we did it about six months prior to the budget process. And I was just wondering if there's any way we could just get the CIP out of the way. But what, is there any, the question though first is, is there any compression?
Because I don't think I know the answer to that in terms of compression. Amy, what's your perspective?
Um, I guess, sorry, when I think of compression, I think of the salary study, but I mean, unfortunately, last year, we didn't even really talk about the CIP. So this year might be a little different just because we didn't really have a CIP last year. So some of, some of the things, and I think that's why it's important to talk about it today as well, is some of the things that, you know, we were in there last year, we're not sure how supportive the board is. So some of the things might, if you mean showing up again or when they'll show up, some of the things might, that might happen this year just because we didn't get a chance to discuss it last year. You know, of course, we have new initiatives and direction from the strategic plan and as well as after today. But I think that, you know, one of the, the things to try to balance, it's difficult because you have to balance the personnel and operations and CIP. And so I think it's been a little bit delayed just because it, it helps us get a clearer picture of revenues and we can certainly adjust that schedule. It's, it's a little difficult for me as well because the CAFRA and the PAFRA are due to the GFOA in December. So, but I think it helps us because by the time we do the CIP, we'll also have the budget packets back. So I think, you know, initially, we didn't kind of want to overpromise any CIP items that the board came to expect. And then we, we would have to kind of backpedal and cut some operations or personnel items to try to fit it in without having kind of a clear picture. But we can certainly look at adjusting that, but I think that that was kind of our rationale initially.
Yeah. I mean, what, what I guess, I'm trying to put it this way, and I don't want to see 200, I mean, excuse me, I don't want to see two $850,000 fire trucks in one year or two years or three years, you know, and that, you know, those, when you do a CIP, hopefully the money is spread out over a period of time where you don't have a year where you've got to have a tax increase because you're funding the CIP. You want it spread out. So you've got a linear type of formula on how your revenues are coming. You don't want to have an up and down chart on your finance just because your CIP doesn't fit that. You, you adjust the CIP. And Amy, I'm, I'm sure you know what I'm talking about. And so I haven't seen numbers to know if we've got that linear type of financing structure to address our CIP needs. So that's, that's, anyway, I've said enough about that. You know what I'm looking for. Two-year budget, I'll, I'll probably get off this real quick. We were presented a two-year budget. I think we, it was presented to us a couple of years ago where this was pretty much etched in stone. I really do believe you should be doing finance, projections, revenue, projections, et cetera, et cetera, regardless if it's a one, two, or five-year budget. I mean, it doesn't make any difference which budget it is, the finances should be projected anyway. And, and so I, and I'm not sure, like last year, we even did a two-year budget. Although we were presented when the mayor, Mike, Commissioner Sears and I got on the board, that, hey, this is your second year of a two-year budget, your input is limited. And I just, I didn't buy into it anyway, but be that as it may. And then probably, you know, the safety at the town hall initiative, that study's been done. I think that's just a matter of action. The salary and classification and a couple of other things, timing is not really good for us. We're not going to know a lot of things about what we're going to have to spend money on in the budget by the time we've got to make a decision on the budget. So those, that's, that's a concern of mine. And like Greg said, maybe we have a pot of money that we just taxed for and put over to the side and say, okay, this is going to be for salary implementation, even if we don't know what that means. I don't like that, but that may be what we got to do. That's probably covers most of my concern right now. I, I, you know, here again, I don't know how far COVID has put us behind. And now we're realistically looking at things, or if in fact, we still got another year of being COVID cautious. I'm not sure. Thanks.
Thanks, Web. Mike?
From my angle on the budget, I agree a lot with what Webb said with the, the one thing in there not to pick on the fire department. Maybe we don't do two fire trucks. But at an earlier time discussing this, we have found out that we're behind in a lot of areas with our vehicles in our budget because we pushed them down the road. And I, I think Amy, that's what he was trying to, to say, how far behind in some of this stuff are we? And can we, I'm not asking you the question, but just, just for a thought, how, how far behind are we? And how can we implement that to make it up, but not necessarily jump out there and say, we're going to add five cents to the tax this year to get that to happen? You know, I guess my longest disappointment is we've been, since the three of us, the mayor and Mr. Fuller and myself have been in it, we fought for improvements on stormwater and improvements on infrastructure and other improvements. And we've done the studies and we've done the research and we budgeted money and we don't see as, Webb puts it, the shovels in the ground in all cases very quickly. So when you're talking about the CIP, I'd like to see the building and maintenance that's been put down the road in there. I'd like to see the vehicles that we are well due that have been cut from the budget the last three years we've been around, maybe be there. And how can we, how can we make them be there? And then the infrastructure projects that we definitely need for this town, we need to have that budgeted in there. We need to be forward thinking on that instead of, well, we can't do it. So let's push it down the road. You know, my thing is we, we're, we sit there and talk about maybe adding five or six cents to, to nourish the beach. And I understand that the, the impact of that beach on this whole community. But at the same time, we're scared to add a penny to put things in that we need every day as far as stormwater or, or. to put things in that we need every day as far as stormwater or, or roads or some of those things. So I think a balance somewhere, but is what I'd like to see in the CIP. But I would also like to agree with Webb on the fact that I don't think we've done a true budget since the very first year we were here. And there was already a budget in place for the most part. That was the only time that I recall us going through with department heads and the town manager and going through everything and actually seeing progress in what we were spending, how we could accomplish it. So I know that's a lot, not nearly as much as Webb's, but hopefully that gives you an idea, Mayor and Town Manager.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. You know, and just some of those points. Yeah. One of the things that we've done in the, in the past is, yeah, we brought, we've done some things like bringing some engineering in-house. And David's great at doing that stuff. Sometimes I think we've allowed ourselves to overwhelm staff in that regard. And, and, you know, we said, may have saved a little money on the engineering costs. But, you know, it's, it sometimes slows down implementation. So when the budget's being put together, you know, going, going forward, if we need you know, robust funding to get any of these projects done, gotten ready to put shovels in the ground, then, you know, I'd urge staff to, you know, to budget that. And if we try to pull money out, you know, just be clear to us about what the implications of that are in terms of, in terms of schedule. And, you know, that may help us a little bit. Wrapping up some of these things that the board is anxious to see wrapped up. So I, I don't have a lot else. I understand Webb's concern, but Webb's expression, I guess I will circle back to public works. And my initial concern about whether we might get something that we would need funding for, Webb makes a great point about, you know, what we need to do with the AEC. So I think in terms of, it's not, it's not a budget item to much of a degree, but I think in terms of expediting actions, the suit, we're not going to get another site. And we're going to have to do whatever we need to do to public works to make it, to the public work site to make it work. So I, I think the sooner those decisions are put in front of the board, the better. You know, let's not, you know, get, get too far, too much further down the road. I mean, we, context aside of whatever the project looks like, that's a decision that we can go ahead and start chewing on. I think that's, that's all I had. So Greg, I don't know if you or staff has any response.
No, I think that's some good direction as we get started on this, that we fully understand you, you want to see projects done. It isn't a matter of having the, having a nice plan and, and not seeing street work get done and drainage projects happen and, and beach access is rehabilitated and that type of thing. So we'll take, certainly take that seriously as we're doing this planning here over the next month and coming back to you with CIP and initial budgets and certainly maintaining service levels and where we can enhance service levels. We obviously want to do that where it's cost effective. And, and really get us to kind of funding into the capital improvement projects. That's, I think that's where the board's real clear at.
May I ask something real quick? You know, we, we heard about the possible recycling program.
Yes.
And that was months ago. And haven't heard anything about it since then.
Well, as I noted in my, I think in the status report, we were, we just got our bids in last week. And I should say, one bid. Bay Disposal did not bid on it. Andy and I had a discussion with Bay Disposal Monday morning and found a kind of where they are at. Part of it is they weren't happy with the way we had you know, paused the contract, the previous contract. But we made it clear the reason we went out for a request for proposals is the board wanted to see different options. But between a overall town service and a subscription service. So we have a proposal for a subscription service. Our advisory board is meeting tomorrow. And we're looking to bring a recommendation back to the board in two weeks. I think that's right, Andy. Is that correct, Andy?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you on that. I mean, I'm, I guess, I would just, this maybe doesn't have anything to do with CIP. But I'm kind of studied that on stuff. And I'm more ready to do stuff. If that makes any sense to anybody else, you know, I kind of got that feeling today. And I'm sorry, I'm sharing my feelings. But I think there was a, I think there was more of a question that really came out about one particular sign in Nag's Head, or a lighting of one particular building, one particular sign, if you will. And we somehow have manifested that into something that, do we need to do it about a study? And yes, but it was very awkward for me to start answering questions of people. Why are y'all doing this survey? And I said, what survey are you talking about? I didn't even know we were doing a lighting survey. Nobody told me we were doing a lighting survey. And then I started getting questioned. So, you know, I'm going like, hell if I know. All I know is we had an issue with one building. And so anyway, thank you for letting me get a little frustration out.
Right. Thank you. So this may be short and sweet. So I'll ask commissioners one more time, if there's anything else to throw in the hopper. And then I'll ask staff one more time if there's, if there's any anything else to tell us. Otherwise, we may be done already. So commissioners?
I'm good. I don't have anything else.
Much, much what Webb said, and I think Mike said it too, getting stuff done, getting projects done. But Mayor Portem also brings up another important point about deferring, or I don't know if he used those words. But when we look at equipment that's been deferred, vehicles being deferred, we were put in that position many years ago because of the economic crisis that we had many years ago. And I still don't think we've caught up from that. So I think trying to catch up and replacing this aging equipment is, I think is important.
Thank you. All right, staff, anything else for us?
Yeah, I think the other thing, just on aging equipment, I know we talked about this previously too, is sanitation trucks. And being on top of that, because particularly because they have long lead time on ordering, that's, that's a major issue. So we do know there'll be some other changes to the sanitation schedule we'll be bringing forward as part of the cycling plan. But right, maybe a lot of things have been studied, a lot of things are moving in towards implementation. So we will, I think it's going to, it's going to be a busy summer from that standpoint.
Very, very good. There's nothing else to come before us today. Then Greg, when, when would our next, when would you next or next budget discussion occur?
What's, what's on the calendar, Amy?
Well, the next thing I have for the board is March 24th, which is a CIP workshop.
Okay.
Unless they want to schedule something ahead of that, that's the next thing I see on the calendar for the budget for the board.
Is the CIP stuff ready?
I'm sorry?
Is, is the CIP stuff ready?
No, sir. They're due back February 15th.
Okay, thanks.
And we would have it, you know, ready for you, like a, a board packet would be that timing, unless you needed more time.
I, I think probably the point of that question was as soon as possible. Sooner we.
Okay.
All right. Hearing nothing else, then, then I think we can adjourn.
Do you want to recess to February mid-month?
Do we have, do we have something planned for February mid-month? Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Let, let me ask staff. Because what I think we're planning to have mid-month was the public hearing for the water sports. And that had been withdrawn by the applicant. So where, where that? What? Or is that going to, is that in a position where we need to have a mid-month meeting to have that public hearing?
That was my understanding that we'd be having that public hearing and for the mid-month meeting.
The terminology on the, on the agenda surprised me. I, I thought that we were going to affirmatively put that back to the mid-month meeting. But it, but it was worded as that the applicant had a continuance requested by the applicant. So if that means the same thing as pushing it back to mid-month, then yes, we need to recess to the mid-month meeting. If that, if, if they, if they requested a continuance for some reason of their own, and we don't know if they're going to be ready, then that's a different.
I believe they are going to be ready for that meeting in two, yes, for the mid-month.
All right. Then we need to recess to 9:00 AM on February the 17th. And a motion to that effect would be in order.
They moved.
I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recess to 9:00 AM on February 17th. So Madam Clerk. Yes.
Discussion?
Yes, sir.
That would necessitate an in-person meeting, correct?
That is correct. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay. I, I may not participate, but be that as it may. Hopefully by then I'll feel a little bit more comfortable.
Okay. Thank you. And, and I will remind staff, we had some discussion about moving that meeting to a larger room, like the training room at the fire department and doing as much spacing as we can in order to protect ourselves, the applicant, you know, their engineers and attorneys and consultants. So I'll, I'll add that to the, to this recess motion that it would, we would convene in person, probably at the fire station.
Thank, thank you. And then I'd feel a lot more comfortable. And that'd be good.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Given that, then, Madam Clerk, will you please poll the board?
Yes. Commissioner Brinkley, your vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fuller? Mayor Portem Sears? And Mayor Cohoon?
Aye. All right. Very good. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.